Or the town could keep the REX and then be able to say that they were using renewable power. So if the project owner keeps the REX, then the town would not be able to say that it was using renewable power from the project. But that would mean that you would be buying the power at a higher price because the project owner wouldn't be able to sell those REX for additional revenue elsewhere. And when we started down the road of this RFP, we hadn't received any guidance from the town on whether or not we should prioritize saving the most possible money or greening the town's renewable supply. So what we did is we asked for proposals that provided prices where the project owner kept the REX or the REX were transferred to the town. And what we found is that the cost to the town of keeping the REX is about $25,000 a year. So that would take the annual savings from $75,000 down to $50,000 if the town were to keep the REX. So this is, we're basically coming to you guys for guidance on this because this is a a pretty big decision and different towns deal with this differently. Some towns like South Portland and Portland have made commitments to reducing their greenhouse gas emissions. And so for some of their projects, they need to keep the REX to meet those goals. Other towns like Falmouth are trying to maximize their savings. And so they're letting the project sponsor keep the REX. So there's actually differing views amongst our committee on which is the best way to go as well. There's definitely pros and cons either way. And so that's why we're coming to you guys to ask about this. And I think Sam will cover later in the presentation. But which way we go on this issue changes which projects we would put on our shortlist. Because some of the proposals have better or worse pricing around the REX. I don't know.
Jamie, can we ask questions now or do we want to wait?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I don't like to break the rules right out of the chute, you know. Anyway.
No, I think especially if we're trying to clarify the information too.
Okay, cool.
Go ahead.
Does the value of the REX change at all? Or are they static once the project is implemented?
No, the value actually changes all the time. So there is a, it's basically a bilateral market where you can sell REX in New England. So the REX that are generated from this project would qualify for the renewable portfolio standards in all the New England states. And the other states actually have higher values put on their REX than in Maine. So the, actually Cape Elizabeth could sell the REX if you, later on, if you wanted to. If you went with the town keeping the REX option. But so the value changes over time and fluctuates depending on supply and demand in that market.
Can you give me just a feel for, because I don't deal in this realm. I kind of sell heads of lettuce, which are more static than REX, I guess. What would a value be? What are we talking about?
So, yeah, yeah. So the value of a Class 1 REX like this is, it could be between zero, it's never zero because there's a banking mechanism. So it could go as low as $10 a megawatt hour. And it could go as high as, I can't remember exactly what the alternative compliance payment level is, but there's a cap on the market because the entities that have to comply, they can pay this alternative compliance payment. And so that's probably around $60 a megawatt hour. I think it might be up to 70 now, but anyway, there's a range. And so it's between those two points. I think now the prices are actually somewhere around $40 a megawatt hour, last time I checked. But within the last couple of years, they've been down at 10 and they've, they've, they could go higher soon. So it does, they do fluctuate a fair amount, but it's kind of between.
What influences their fluctuation?
It's mostly its supply and demand in the marketplace. So it's, it's an interesting market because it's not that, it's not that fluid. But so, and a lot of, a lot of supply is through long-term contracts through, like there's a big RFP out in Maine that's going to bring a bunch of supply on. But some of those offshore wind projects that we're expecting in Massachusetts, those are going to bring a big chunk of REX supply. So it's, it's just a little chunky. And, and sometimes, and it's, if you get, if there's an oversupply situation, it would, it takes a little while to even out and then the prices will go down. If there's undersupply, these projects take several years to come online. The market's not really enough to bring them. So the projects need financing and, and long-term contracts to get that. And that can kind of slow down supply catching up with demand. And so you might have high prices for a while.
What's, what's the trend looking like? Is the trend looking that supply will continue to increase?
That's, that's, that's a, that's a big question. I think that if the offshore wind projects that have been contracted by some of the southern New England states, if those projects are to, to be successful in getting their permits, which there's been some delays. But if those projects are successful in getting their permits, so states are being really active in contracting for supply. And so it will probably, I wouldn't expect us to have a shortage. So you'd be sort of in the tend to.
Added to that, the, the smart market, the, the Massachusetts market just doubled their capacity or their allocation from 1,600 megawatts to 3,200 megawatts. And we don't know what the local influence will be because if you take the load, which is what the first jump off for the net energy billing load is going to be 10% of load plus the auction, you could see as much as a thousand more megawatts hitting the system in the next couple of years locally. And that might influence, disrupt the supply side as well.
So it's also a long run of the life of this project. It's a dynamic market. The buyers are people who need to either want or are required to buy renewable energy. And so as more renewable energy is available, the requirements often are raised by the, you know, by the people who regulate them.
Mike?
Can I make a couple of comments about this? And I've had a lot of experience in these kinds of markets, both in the U.S. and internationally. So there's no question more renewable energy is coming. There will be more supply. So I think, you know, my, my personal view is high green certificate prices not likely. I think the real issue for the town is if the town decides to keep the green certificates, to say that it's in the greenest position and keeping, and just keep those and shall we say retire them and never take the monetary benefit will reduce savings. If the town is thinking that, gee, maybe we hold on to them, but if the certificates go through the roof, we could sell them and make more money. It's a speculative market. It's also a market created by regulation. So I wouldn't be thinking about this as a money-making opportunity. And the third thing about it is if you have, if the sponsor keeps the REX, the town is still going to buy the electricity at a fixed price that is lower. And the risk that the REX aren't worth more then belong to the sponsor or developer of the project and not the town.
That was my next, that was my next question. Because if the sponsor owner of the project is the one who's holding the REX and the price is, is down, that's, that puts the town in a better position.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's their problem, exactly. Thank you. You answered my question.
I think Tom's, Tom's really right. It's really, the question we're asking the council is really a philosophical question about whether or not the town wants to reduce emissions from power it uses or it wants to save more money. I mean, that's, that's the, that's the question.
But I think that I really, I think Tom's point is the point that I was getting at is who's going to own the fluctuation? And if the owner of the project owns that fluctuation, then I think it puts the town in a better position. So that's just my opinion, but I'll let other people kind of go on to that.
If I could jump in, Jeremy Gabrielson, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to figure out to, you know, so $25,000 a year over the life of a seven-year project is a lot of money. And so I, you know, aside from the issue of whether or not the town might or may not be able to resell them later, you know, what, what would we be buying essentially for $25,000 a year? We're not in a position where we are required to purchase REX. So what's the, what's the value that we would be purchasing, I guess?
Harry, can I jump in on this first and then you follow up?
Sure, yeah.
And, and one thing I also wanted to say in the middle of this. If, if the town were to exercise one of the options after seven, 10, or 20 years, or 15 years to buy the project, the town would then own the REX and can keep it. So you could also look at this as a seven-year issue. If the town wanted to exercise the option and buy the project out and own it in its own seven years from now or 10 years from now. So just keep that in mind. So the, what the, what the REX provide is the town can say the electricity it's purchasing is green. Because legally speaking, to say you're having green electricity, you have to be the owner of the REX. So if the town's not the owner of the REX, what the town has, it could say, we've got landfill, we've got a solar project on the landfill. It says we, we are reducing our electricity bill, but we can't say we have green electricity and reduce, and are reducing our carbon footprint. Even though that project on the landfill will be displacing some kind of carbon-generated electricity somewhere else in New England. But you just can't claim the rights to say that we've got green electricity for the town.
Yeah, and some, some towns have decided that they want to reduce carbon. It's something that they're doing. So like Portland and South Portland have, have taken some actions in that direction. And so that, that decision changes how they would look at this decision. Cape Elizabeth hasn't made any carbon reduction goals that, that we're aware of. But if you were, then this is, you know, if the town did have those goals, that would be, you would need to keep the REX. So it's kind of a philosophical question.
One of the key issues is if you're building a solar project, people are going to expect that you're building green power. And if you're not, you need to be really clear and transparent about that. Because otherwise you, you may find yourself in a difficult, misunderstood spot. So that's, between the communication and the philosophical approach, those are the, those are the issues that you're managing.
I think one way to look at it that might help clarify it a little bit, if we turned to Matthew, if we turn to slides 11 and 12. So slide 11. Now, go, go up one slide. You're on slide 12. No, that one, okay. Starting there, if you look at, the blue bars represent bids that we received where the REX are kept by the town. And this expresses over the 20-year life, the average annual savings the town would expect. And the yellow bars are savings that the town would get if the town keeps the REX. And that simply shows it on an average annual basis over 20 years. The next slide is the net present value of the savings over 20 years. So it's the same thing, but saying what's your total savings worth today? And in finance terms, at a discount rate of, I think, eight, what, 5% or something we used. And so that's, again, shows really the, the cost of the REX. So if you look at the upper bids, you know, the town is saving on a net present value basis over a million a year from the better, higher bids. But that would be, you'd be saving over 20 years, 200,000 for claiming the green. And that's the real, that's the real economics that you're looking at.
And the halfway, the halfway ground is, is on the ones where the REX go to the sponsors. If you buy it out at seven years, the economics don't change a lot, partly because the town's money is relatively low cost for long-term projects. So that present value wouldn't change that much. And the REX would then return to the town after that period. So it's sort of a midway choice point.
Councilor.
I want to say one thing about the savings. This is calculated in a standard way. And it says, what would we pay CMP right now at the CMP tariff? And how that's usually increases over time? And if the CMP tariff goes up even more, we would save more. If it doesn't go up as much, we would save less. The calculation is a pretty standard calculation used across the industry to determine likely savings.
So I just wanted to thank you all for this. This is phenomenal work. This is probably the best presentation I've seen from a subcommittee, just content-wise. And I've seen some good ones, but this is phenomenal. So thank you all for, for all your hard work on this. I just wanted to reiterate a point and make sure I'm understanding this. Because I think it, for me at least, it sums up exactly the direction I'd end up going. So at this point in time, the town of Cape Elizabeth does not have a policy, to my understanding, or a mandate of any sort, saying that we have set a goal to be 100% renewable in the next one, three, or five years. We have nothing along those lines, not even anything saying we want to be 50% renewable. So we don't have a policy that we're moving towards renewable sources for energy use. I understand that some people in town may want us to do that. And I understand some counselors may want us to do that. And some members of the committee may want us to do that. But at this point in time, we don't have that policy. But what we've seen, what the presentation here is saying is to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, from a fiscal standpoint, the town will get a better return if they give the REX to the sponsor. Under, our expectation is that with the understanding that there is a level of variability, there's a level of unknown. So there's a risk. Things could go way up. So the REX are very valuable, but they could go down as more things come online. So whoever holds the REX is taking on a risk. But that risk only really applies from the town's perspective if it is choosing to sell them rather than hold on to them so that we can have the badge of honor of we're whatever percentage renewable powered. So for me, it sounds like this is the key point. We can not make a decision on the renewable, the badge of honor renewable power right now. We can go the route of leave them with the sponsor and take the net savings to the town from a fiscal standpoint, with the understanding at the seven-year mark, we can acquire this entire project, at which point the REX come back to us. So we could set a policy saying we want to be 50, 75% renewable in seven years. And when we acquire the project with one fell swoop, we're suddenly now meeting our renewable goal. Given the fact that there is no renewable gold right now, my inclination is for us not to hold on to the REX and look at that seven-year mark as our opportunity to kind of flip the switch, so to speak, and say, now we are. And in the meantime, also have the fiscal benefits to the taxpayers in the short term.
Yeah, I think, Chris, I think your understanding of, of what we've presented is spot on. Yeah, I think everything.
We wanted to make sure everyone understood the choices that you, we, we didn't want to make those choices as the committee. We wanted you to understand what the choices are. And you, it seemed like you've got it.
Yeah, you guys did a great job of presenting it. So although I am curious to hear if the inclina, it sounds like there was a disparate views on the committee. I would be curious to hear if they were driven by the fiscal variability or if it was, there was a feeling amongst some members of the committee of, oh, we really would love to be energy renewable at this point.
I would say that's exactly it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, no, I, I, as someone who hoped that we would get to keep the REX, I would, it's, it's all driven by the desire to see, see us become more environmentally responsible.
My, my particular view is just basically driven by the mission that I felt we had in our committee. We were not on purpose, I assume, a renewable energy committee. We were, we were designated as an energy committee. And if you said, we are renewable energy committee, I might have thought a different way about that, maybe.
I think it's, I think it's important for the, you to understand that the capacity that we're currently looking at is 2/3 of the town, current town capacity. So that if we don't ever keep the REX, then the most we could, you know, the most we could, and then in the future want to go a certain percentage of renewable energy, you know, we'd have to have, you know, we'd be losing 2/3 of those, of that opportunity. Basically, we're looking at 2/3 for this project. It's consuming about, addressing about 2/3 of the, of the town current usage. So that's the quantity of the REX that we're, we're talking about.
And it would be, I guess, as my view, as another person on the committee was, given fiscal constraints and everything that's going on right now, saving money felt more important. As Joe and others had said, there's an ability to change that at the buyout options in the future. So you can bring the REX back. And, and I think the, I think the third thing is, some of this, you know, it can, it can, it can get confusing. And I think, you know, for image for the town, I think people say, well, you entered into PPA, you're selling, you're saving energy costs and you put solar panels on the landfill. And I think that for a lot of people in town, that will be sufficiently green for the time being.
So. I wanted to follow up on that, Tom, and ask either you or John that question. Because John, you had mentioned sort of the delicate, you know, dance from a communications perspective on that. And I, I understand, I think I understand what you're talking about. So, you know, it's the difference between saying sort of the town is renewably powered versus, you know, the town has made an overall contribution to, you know, the betterment of renewable energy use, just not necessarily here in town, right?
So, yes. So people sort of expect that you're going to have green energy when you put in a solar project. But honestly, it's just like we bought our energy from a lower-cost bulk provider some, somewhere else. And there's no renewable impact whatsoever of putting that on there, except the fact that our land use for our landfill is probably optimized environmentally. Until such point as you buy it back. The other thing is, this discussion about what to do about the, the.
Right, but somebody, if I could just, somebody's buying it though, right? So it's being produced and somebody's buying it.
Correct.
So that, I mean, in, in the massive macro global picture, that, that is a net positive, right?
Correct.
Except they paid that, they paid us for that. That's why the cost, there's a cost difference.
Right.
The other thing to consider, the other thing to consider also is.
All I'm saying is that it's not without environmental benefit, is the point.
No, I think, I think, I think the way to look at it is that the, the town, you know, citing, citing renewable energy projects is quite challenging. And so for, by providing a site for the project, the town is making a, a good contribution. And the distinction maybe is that the, the overall amount of renewable energy may not be higher because there's all these policy goals. And the, the, the project owner is going to use those REX to meet those goals. If the town were to retain the REX and retire them, they wouldn't be going to meet the goals. And so some other project would be required. So that's the only difference.
Also, look, the other thing that we're sort of, we're not overlooking is we will have solar panels on a landfill that we can all go out and look at, okay? So if somebody tells you, you don't have renewable energy, okay, I get it. But when you show people from out of town or when somebody goes to landfill and say, look, we've got a solar project sitting on a landfill, I think that's very big.
It's a big billboard.
It may be that seeing the project on the landfill would inspire other people in town to buy solar on their houses.
John, and then, yeah, go ahead, John.
I think the other thing that happened is this project came up relatively quickly. And it's good because it's a really good project. But it really sort of happened in advance of thinking through, does the town want to have an environmental and/or green energy or some sort of policy around that? And how, what would that look like? Were it, you know, because I do think that's actually probably a good idea. There'll be other decisions that will help guide you on that. And you want to get input from people to see how they feel. There's a lot of places that have that. And so this is happening in advance of having done that work. And so there's a, there was a cautiousness, as, as Richard said, of tying up the 2/3 of the demand for a significant period of time before having that discussion.
Could we keep the REX now and sell them later? If the town decides they don't want to be green after we do the analysis?
That, that, you could do that, Barb, but then, you know.
No, it's, it's not ideal, definitely not.
And then the town has to become the seller of the REX.
Right.
Manage that process as opposed to the, the sponsor. All of these guys have entities that manage and do this.
Right.
So we'd acquire expertise to sell the REX.
Yeah.
And, and you would, and now you're taking on a risk too, which you don't have to otherwise.
Harry, perhaps it'd be interesting if you explained who typically buys REX?
Who buys REX? So the, anyone, load-serving entities who have to comply with the RPS. So in Maine, that's the, like the standard offer program or any of the retail, retail suppliers.
CMP, AMIRA.
Yeah, so, well, that's what's CMP, you get if you're on the standard offer program. It's actually the PUC who does the compliance. But basically, just imagine it was CMP, the people who are getting you your power. Or if you were to sign up for, like, what was that company that was advertising all the time? Electricity Maine, they would have to provide some percentage of renewable power and then some percentage of, you know, whatever gas generation or. So what are the, what are the, like, what is the probability that the town would want to buy the project in seven years? Like, I don't know the, what the cost would be. If money is tight now, it could be tighter in seven years. So we might not want to have the money to buy it.
So generally speaking, municipal bond rates are lower than the, the discount rate in the NPV calculations. So for the, the rule of thumb, it's going to be not much difference or net positive because you're going to be able to use lower cost money on a, on a cash flow positive long-term project.
Well, the point also is, John, and it's, it's also that we, it will be an option among certain vendors. They're offering us an option. You take the option, you don't take the option. The option doesn't cost us anything. We know what the buy-in will be at that particular time, which we'll see in the next slides.
From a financial point of view, you'd be swapping a bond payment for a PPA payment. That's what the difference would look like, a, a bond payment and a maintenance contract payment.
Counselor Straw, Counselor Straw next. And then I, after, after Chris comments and maybe requires an answer, I want to jump in to just sort of manage our time a little bit here. So Chris, go ahead. And if you need an answer for what you're saying or asking, we'll get to that. And then I want to come back around to just drive in the meeting a little bit.
So I'm, I think it's highly, highly, highly unlikely I'd be on the town council in seven years. But what I would look to have the council do over the next half year in conjunction with this is set a long-term goal of becoming more energy independent with renewable energy. Perhaps setting it at the seven-year mark with the goal of, yes, we're doing this now so that the tax credits can be used by the private entity. But at the seven-year mark, we acquire it. But obviously, the current town council can't bind future town councils to doing things. But obviously, the current town council can't bind future town councils to doing things. Although I guess there's, who knows what the future town councils will do. But I would be interested in setting a long-term goal, but I would set it at the seven-year mark.
Okay. I want to, so this has been great discussion. And I echo Chris's point earlier, and I'm sure speak for the rest of the council. The analysis and information here is incredible. I want to keep us focused, especially mindful of a second agenda item that we have tonight. And that is, you know, Sam, maybe you can pull us back to discuss around the things that require decisioning, or at the very least, direction from the council tonight, or in the near term. And I, sort of, an overall timing around some of these things, so that we can have a better understanding of how to move forward. And I know that there's also the item that you've raised in both your, in your memo around one of the specific bidders and relationship with one of the committee members as well. So I want to make sure we have time to cover all of that and give that enough discussion for now, so.
That's great, yeah, that's impressive. And I'm glad you were able to respond and, and digest our thoughts on the REX issue. I think it's really important, and thank you for your direction on that. So the second kind of issue we want to bring in front of you is the conflict of interest potential, COI. One of our committee members, Tom Merely, who you've heard. Tom, will you just describe kind of your, your old Amaresco and kind of your, you know, your perspective, you know, on this?
Yeah, just really simple. So Amaresco is listed on the New York Stock Exchange. I've been a member of their Board of Directors for four years, and I've known the founder of the company for over 25 years, which is why I was asked to join the board. Amaresco is the largest energy efficiency company in America, and their core business is, you know, improving energy efficiency of schools, municipalities, universities, hospitals and the like. But they also do small-scale solar projects. If you've driven out along the Mass Pike and seen the solar projects at the various toll pauses in the Mass Pike, that's Amaresco. So they are New England-based, they're a leading company. And this is one of the small sizes. They don't do the big projects. This is the kind of thing they like to do, and they have lots of landfill experience. So that's kind of the company. I've been on their board for four years. I've disclosed the conflict from the beginning. In Amaresco's size, you know, they make over, they have $900 million a year in revenue. Frankly, doing this project or not doing the project doesn't move the needle for them economically. I receive a normal stipend for being a member of the board. I receive no additional compensation if they do this or don't do this. And it's so small and relative to the bid of the board that Amaresco's, I would never vote on this decision to do or not do the deal, because it will never come to the board of Amaresco, because it's too small and ordinary course of business. But, you know, they are an experienced company. I'll let, you know, Sam and some other people talk about them. But I've disclosed the conflict, you know, they've come in, they've, they're a bidder, and they are a bidder that, you know, by the numbers, probably should be shortlisted. But we wanted to make sure that people were aware of the conflict and that I haven't voted on it and particularly wouldn't vote in any final decision on awarding either about Amaresco. But maybe, Sam, you can say something about Amaresco, because you know them, Sam Lipman, about whether these guys should or should not be on the shortlist, regardless of my conflict.
Oh, well, we have them in, we have them on the shortlist, but maybe not the highest, highest grade based on the numbers that they put out. We, you and I talked about this, Tom. But of course, they are by far and away probably the most stable company in the, from an experience point of view and from a financial point of view. So we, by the way, and I'm going to regress a little bit. Tom and the rest of us, but Tom really worked hard on putting up a rating system. Sam, are you going to be showing that rating system at all in this? I forgot.
The last three slides.
Okay, so I will, I won't elaborate. And, and so I don't have to comment too much about why Amaresco is where they are. Amaresco scored quite high on, on, on some of these ratings that we put together, and on others, they were low than others. So it was a cumulative rating system that we used to, to put Amaresco in a certain place and recommend them for the shortlist. And I really don't have to say anymore about that, because we put a lot of effort into it. Tom, you put an awful lot of effort into, into getting the rating right, or, and, and we all kind of commented on that as well.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that the council was aware of that and have sort of been fully transparent. That was the purpose of that agenda item.
Okay. So can you, can you help me understand what, I guess, what, what role, Tom, you've had in, in assigning the scoring here? Or just coming up with, so you, as a committee member, were you more involved in developing the ranking methodology? And then, or, help walk me through that, so that, because I think, I think actually, I think we're in a situation where this probably is a conflict of interest, or at least a perceived one, that we probably, that the toothpaste is a little bit out of the tube already on this, given the discussion we've already had and the work that's already gone into this. And it's one of these difficult things where your expertise is hugely valued on this, no question about it. But to the average person, I think, you know, there, there would certainly be, at the very least, some question about, about this, so.
So what, so what we did is, taking all the bids, the first thing we did was build a model that took all the inputs of the bids. I can send the model around. It's crazy, but to model all these variants and calculate the savings, and that was done for everyone on the same basis. So we took all that, and that's where you get the, you know, the savings data. And there's a whole bunch of other analysis we haven't shared with you. And everyone in the, on the teams look at it. Richard Parker's been particularly good at looking at the model and checking methodology and making sure all the calculations are correct. It's a big X-top spreadsheet. And then, having taken that, we, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna open mine up here for a minute. We, no, that's not it. We then, we then created a ranking system, and I just need to open this up. And we scored everyone as objectively as we could. There it is.
So, and the, you know, the ranking scale came out of the consensus of basically how we put together the RFP, because the RFP was what we were going to be evaluating. And then we took that and put it into a rating scale, sort of, as a group, as a consensus. And so everything was sort of put together as that, the group decision. It was not driven by any one member whatsoever.
So on the ranking, what we did, just going across it, we, we weighted this, you know, 60% of the weighting went to, how much money are you saving, the town? So everyone was rated 1 to 10 based on the amount of the-
And that's an objective number, that's, there's no subjectivity to that.
Objective number, that's 60% of the weighting. And then there's a similar weighting, 1 to 10, based on the production. So how many, which is kind of a subset of savings, but how much electricity is going to be produced? There's a weighting of 5% on what it costs to build it. Who is more efficient in their capital program? We then weighted at various levels their experience in doing landfill. You know, Amaresco's done a lot of landfill. Some of the other bidders have not done much landfill. We did a rating on financial ability. Clearly, Amaresco's a big company, comes out very high on that. The other ones, though, are actually pretty high. We gave a small ranking as to whether or not people had a main office. Some of them do, some of them don't. We gave another ranking on experience on building in Maine. Again, these would have been done kind of on a 1 to 10 rating. And then there are a couple other things. You know, if, if the town wanted to get more electricity, would they offer us a project outside the town to top up the town's electricity need? And then, and some offered that, some didn't. Cost savings, so there's, one of the things we put in was, if it cost them less to build this, would they share some of the savings with the town in terms of reduced PPA price? Some people were more willing to do that than others. And then we also put a ranking, a small weighting, on how quickly they could get it into the ground. And, you know, we can share that ranking, but then everyone was put in on trying to be as objective of that, as objective as possible. But the big driver on that really is the, the production, the CapEx, and the, the price savings, which are pretty objective in the rank.
So did each member of the committee do their own scoring, and then that was aggregated, or?
What I did is, I put together a score, I put together the scoring, and I've sent it around to people, and we've talked about it at the meetings, and we've talked about whether the weightings are correct in the scoring. So everyone's looked at it.
Yeah.
And we, we went through the savings calculations in detail as well. So it's like the, those, the objective criteria, which actually kind of tend to dominate the rating system, which is the savings and the production and the CapEx, which we were sort of all in agreement with. Those are pretty black and white, and were reviewed by, the calculation reviewed by everybody.
Yeah, the ones that are softer, the ones that are softer and a little bit more subjective have to do with experience with landfills, experience in main projects, you know, things of that sort, but.
So-
I, I don't think those made any determinations in the final list at all, really. They're all pretty close.
Yeah. Savings, production, and CapEx were 75% of the scoring system.
Yeah.
And by the way, another thing that was really important, Councilman, is that, is that when we looked at, the reason why we asked them for their CapEx figures and for some of their production figures, and I was particularly interested in that, is, is I look at this from a realistic point of view as well. What is reality? What were they putting out there that was, was wishful thinking? Or was there anything in their production numbers that wasn't right, the way their orientations were? So that was part of our, our rating as well. And I think that, that made, what we found out was that that wide range caused some concern for some other questions that we had as well. And so that's how we focused a lot of our final three or four, based on what reality was as well.
Right. So what I would say going forward, and any other councilors, please feel free to weigh in, but the, the committee has yet to put forward their final recommended bidder, right? What we, what we see here is an in-process review, but based on the discussion we've had here tonight, this will theoretically change in some cases based on the town's objective. So I, I, I think that on a go-forward basis, Tom, that you probably shouldn't participate in making the final recommendation.
Absolutely not.
Yeah. And so, you know, at, at a minimum. Counselor Deveraux, I see your hand raised.
Tom, I, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, we-
Okay, okay. Tom, I, I really appreciate your expertise. You've been there for 25 years, it sounds like, is that what you said?
No, I've known the owner of Amaresco for 25 years. I've known the company a long time. I've been on the board for four years.
For four years, okay, okay. I'm just curious how you've been managing the conflict this far. It, it, it sounds like you, you've told them about the conflict, but you're still working on the project. Is that what's happening?
All we've done is, we, what we've done is, we got the bid, we analyzed their bid, we came back and asked them for clarifications. And then, you know, we did, you know, we, we pulled together, someone had to pull together the, the spreadsheet analysis, but everyone's looked at that. So I wouldn't say I'm working on the project, and I'm certainly not talking to Amaresco about it.
Well, what I, what I mean by project, I mean, as a group, as a committee, you're all working on this as a project. And, and just for clarification for my sake, how were the bids opened? Were they all opened at the same time, or as they came in?
There was a deadline for the projects. In other words, you had, they may not come all in the same day, but they had, they had a deadline for coming in.
Okay, so you opened them after the deadline? So they were all opened at the same time?
Correct, yeah. No one saw anything. They're all sent to Perry, and then they're all in. Perry sent them all to all the committee members.
Okay, okay, I'm just, I just want to, and as you stated, you know, avoid the appearance of impropriety. And how, how are you proposing to manage the conflict going forward?
You know, I think, I think it's, for me, it's certainly, don't talk to Amaresco. I think, you know, we go back, if they're shortlisted, we go back and, with all these bidders, and ask them to put a best and final with some clarification around, you know, whether the town's going to keep the REX or not. And then, you know, I think at this point, with the final bids, we have enough on the modeling exercise that someone else on the team could take over the financial, the spreadsheet and run the analysis and come up with the recommendations. And then I would just excuse myself from those, from the decisions.
Okay, okay. Because we don't have a, a written policy, but we need to follow the state law. And it just sounds like a full recusal is going to be important here since you are on the board of Amaresco.
Counselor Penny Jordan, go ahead.
Oops. Okay, all I wanted to say is, number one, Tom, I understand exactly what has transpired, that it, it's been a lot of group work up to this point, and no specifics around any organization you might be involved with that you haven't really been a super proponent of. You've let the process happen from a very team and subjective perspective. I like what you just said about how you would work going forward, which is really where my question was going. And so twice tonight, you answered my question before I got to ask it. So number one, when it comes down to the final decision, I, I understand what you're saying is that you would not even be engaged in, on, on any vote around who would get the bid or receive the project. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah. And I think the only issue going forward is, if the rest of the team feels they can run the screening, you know, the model where we take all this stuff and figure out which is the best option, you know, someone else, I think, should be able to do that. The only thing I can say, if someone says, gee, we need some help fixing the model, I would say, well, I would help do that, but not participate in the decision, because it's just going to come down to numbers now.
Great, thank you.
So I, I think the best course of action at the moment is, is probably standing down, Tom, from, from your engagement on the, on the RFP. And Matt, if you could reach out to outside council as well, just to get a, an opinion rendered for, for the council on that.
I'll do it first thing in the order, Mr. Chairman.
I, I think, I think, Tom, as you indicated, that, you know, the committee has the necessary means in place. Somebody have something to say here? I think the committee has the necessary means in place to continue, you know, moving forward. But, you know, we, we just really need to, to make sure we, we cover crossing eyes, crossing Ts and dotting Is on this. You know, just, you know, number one, do adhere to our policies and rules. And number two, to protect ourselves in the event that, you know, any of the bidders that aren't awarded the project would challenge us on it. So, so I think that's, I think that's the best way to move from here. And I, I think, on that score, Sam, kind of back to you, on, and, and Matt as well, on, on where we need to go for sort of immediate, short-term and near-term next steps to move forward.
Jamie, this is Penny. Don't we need to give them direction on the REX? Don't we need to give them direction on the REX?
Yeah, so one of the questions I have is, is that something that we need to just come to consensus on tonight? I don't know if we need to vote on that, vote on it at a regular meeting. I was not clear on that, so.
Okay.
Whenever you do that, we, if you noticed going back up the one slide there, Sam- Whenever you do that, we, if you noticed going back up the one slide there, Sam, it, it really depends on that rec decision, depends on who hits our shortlist. And as soon as we can work on our shortlist with the next questions for the shortlist members, then would be really great for us and everybody, keep our milestones in place.
I'd probably say one thing about this is, you know, the town and thinking about this, you guys want to be in a position, because the tax support is changing. And I think it was gone through earlier, some of these tax credits are going to disappear. So what you want to do is be in a position to sign with one of these companies in early Q4 of this year, if possible, October, November timeframe latest, you lock in the benefits. So what you need to do is work back to getting clarification bids from whoever the shortlist is, and then getting a recommendation back and getting on the town agenda. So that, you know, whether it's the planning, final council decisions can happen in, you know, October or November. And so that comes to compression that kind of says you need guidance now, if you want to keep those benefits for this year. Cause if not, if you wait till next year, the savings will be less.
Yep. So Matt, on the, on the question of setting the policy direction, is that something that we can do just coming out of this workshop? Or is that something we need to actually vote on?
I, I think you can go by consensus this evening so that the committee can move forward. Not with a formal vote, but just if you can see that there's consensus among the council, to at least let them know, you know, what direction that the committee would like to go in. Then they could come back based on the direction the council indicates and come back with their solid recommendation for, for future council action.
Okay, so can I start by polling the council, starting with Jeremy, on what your preference is?
Yeah, sure. I, my preference would be to allow the, not to purchase the recs.
Okay. And Valerie?
You are on.
I, I agree. I think we need to maximize our savings and not purchase the recs.
Caitlin?
Yeah, right now, I'd agree.
Penny?
I would say not purchase and then have on the horizon the seven years to buy up the project.
And Chris, I think from your earlier comments, that's consistent with your point of view.
Yeah, I was just going to note, I haven't heard any of the councilors' comments that they were in favor of purchasing the recs in the very near term.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm in agreement. So I think the consensus is unanimous. I, I, my, my interest in, isn't so much necessarily driven by just the savings. It's more about a risk management play for me. So, you know, I, I think particularly with this being the first of these projects that we would be embarking on, I think it, you know, it, it's prudent to go with a lower risk, you know, prospect than, than be more aggressive, perhaps for future things that might change. But I think for the initial project, it makes sense to do that. So, so there's your answer on, on that outstanding question, Sam and committee. And then, so I'm, I'm not sure if there's anything that needs to, Matt, I, I know I saw in the memo about this being on the June 15th council meeting, potentially, or was that?
That was. That's the anticipated potential date for that, if you want to have a fraction, if things go well this evening, and that way the committee can come away with some answers.
So, so what would be brought back to the 15th meeting is the shortlist? Is that right? The final shortlist?
I believe the recommendation, who the final person would be, or final team would be.
Well, based on what you just told us, we have a shortlist in the slides. Is that, committee, is there somebody else who want to comment on that one?
Slide number nine.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we prepared, yeah, you basically two different shortlists. One, if the town wanted to keep the recs and one if the town wanted to, to give the recs to the sponsor. So yes, the slide nine shows our, our shortlist kind of based on, on the latter, which of course you, the, the, based on the feedback you've given us. So these are the, you know, in green, you can see the, the, the three bidders that we think are, you know, have the best, the best, you know, package. So what we propose is kind of going back to those three and asking for, for best and final. And they kind of, you know, and once we get, get that back, you know, sooner we get it as soon as we possibly can. I'm not sure if we can get it in time for the 15th town council meeting, if that were a useful date to keep to.
Well, I, I was just confused about, it was in your memo, Sam, that referenced the 15th council meeting. I wasn't sure what, what was needed then, so.
Yeah.
Or if, or if there is anything needed then. So, and, and just as a point of reference, I mean, our, our regular business meeting is the 18th. We've got a special meeting on the 15th for a vote on another item. Doesn't mean that this couldn't be added to that. But I, I guess I'm just not clear on, on what, what action is needed from us at this point? Or is it simply the action of, once the final bids are submitted, the determined, I forget the language you had in here, but it was preferred bidder. You know, we, we would go to, go to negotiations and then at, at some point that the council would sign off on the final contract, I think. Cause I, I, I'm not clear on what votes are needed between now and, and that point, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we're on the other, frankly. I mean, yeah, ideally we'd like to be able to proceed kind of with, with the process, you know, go back to these three shortlisted bidders and kind of, you know, and, and, and select, you know, a, you know, one of these three as kind of our preferred bidder. And then begin negotiating with them with the goal of getting to September 30th, you know, with completion of all the project review and, and the legal work.
Yeah.
So one question we had, of course, was like, you know, what are those, what are those, those touchpoints we need to, to have with you?
So.
In terms of your approvals.
I would think that, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, I would think of the, the next step on this would be upon receipt of a preferred bidder, based on this direction, would we then want to have, prior to engaging the planning board and the like, would we have a public hearing first or wait till after it goes through planning board review? They, they would have their own public hearing as part of that?
If, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think what your, your next step would be, would be to enter into negotiations, potentially for formalizing an agreement with the, with the preferred bidder from that group, would probably be the action that the council could take at that point. And then that would also give them the opportunity, if they were actively negotiating with the town, that they could then perhaps on the dual track, go forward with a proposal to the planning board, because the planning board process, as you know, could take a bit of time to get through. Should have to go through a workshop and then come back. And then, you know, that, with the scale and the scope of this project, it may take a little bit of time. So if those two could run on a parallel track, while we were negotiating with them, and that would be engaging legal as well to make sure the terms of the, of the contract were spelled out clearly. And we have to find specialized talent, which I, I know we can find that within, within the different, you know, may not be our, our town firm. It may be one of the local Portland firms that we, that we have relationships with to do that work, as well as review those details of the contract, get that moving forward for future action. At that point, you could have, you know, as, as a formalized action item on a council in a future, on a future agenda to formalize things and open and available for public comment, such as any other contractual agreement that the council would be entering in on behalf of the town.
Also, Chairman, I wanted to, to point that, that you, the points well taken. And, and obviously the issue of any kind of permitting or zoning, land use are really part of the due diligence package anyway. And they're, they're all going to take a bit of time. So really one is, is exclusive, mutually exclusive. My question to, to you, to the council is, when we do choose the final third bidder, so to speak, do you want us to offer the last shortlist, why we picked that bidder and compare them for you at the, at that meeting? Or would you just go along with the bidder and just sort of a rationale, why we picked that particular bidder on its own?
I, I, I assume that like any recommendation coming from any committee, we would, we would take your recommendation, consider it, and then, and then approve the recommendation. And if there was, if there was debate or discussion about whether or not the, the recommended vendor was the one to go with, then the council, I guess, could conceivably say, well, let's go with the number two or the number three. This is a little bit different than a lot of recommendations that come from other committees, because it's of such a specific and technical nature that it's, it's less about, for lack of a better term, personal preference or, or even policy preference, as much as it is relying on, on your all's expertise in this area. So it's, you know, it, it, it reminds me to a certain degree of a committee that I was involved in, that made the recommendation on the design for the new transfer station about five or six years ago. And, you know, any, there, there were councilors at the time that, that certainly questioned parts of the recommendation. Ultimately, I believe everybody signed on on board to that plan. But, you know, easily any of the councilors could have said, oh, I think we should go with this other plan that would do this instead. But does that answer your question?
Yes, and, and just to be pragmatic, I want to ask Sam a question while we're talking about this. It was a, as it says, a little bit of confusion as to when our next meeting should be and when we should be selecting this. Sam, do we, we do have a date in which we supposed to pick the final bidder?
Well, we have our own calendar that, that we've created. But basically, I think it all boils down to, like, we want to get the, you know, get, get, get the, the paperwork all, all signed and sorted by, you know, in time for us to capture the current years.
Do we, do we have a, do we have a tentative time when council would, would want to look at this thing? And when we want to present it to council though? When we, we at least anticipate making this final decision?
I would say, go ahead.
Sam. I would say on this that, you know, it's June 1st, going back and asking these guys for the final bids, there are a number of things we're going to have to ask them and clarify them. It's going to take a few days to put the questions we want to these guys. It's going to take some time to answer them. So I think June 15th, June 18th is unlikely to come back with a recommendation. So I think you kind of put that out to a July meeting so that we can get the information, the committee can do the analysis and then make the recommendation. And I would think at that July meeting, it would be approving going into it and also the expenditure for a legal council and appointing legal council. And I think one thing that, you know, that, that I would say is, I teach this kind of project finance at BU Law School. And I think you need someone from one of the Portland firms who understands how this works, or else you're going to spend a lot of money. It's, it's a specialized area. There are people in Maine that know how to do it. So I think it's looking at picking someone and getting that budget. And then as, as Matthew said, you run it in parallel from there to getting, you know, the, the final documents negotiated, the PPA, you know, the land stuff, while the planning goes on, all with a view toward this gets done sometime in late October, early November, and then you're off to the races.
I just wanted to make sure that council understands at least that we're not going to be doing this next two weeks and they don't have to worry about us for a while. And then we have some a date.
Yeah, and I, I don't, that's, I, I didn't think it was actually, that was my initial line of questioning on this was, it's sort of raising a bit of a skeptical view on that, because I, I didn't think we really needed to do that. So our, our July meeting is scheduled for the 13th. The second Monday is, is late in, in, in July because of when the month starts. So, but, I mean, I think if we, if we brought this forward on the 13th agenda for the council to vote to approve a preferred vendor to enter into negotiations with, that seems like the most logical next step. And I don't know, Matt, within that time, what can be done to almost pre-coordinate with the planning board in anticipation of a project coming to them? Maybe even setting, you know, some, some placeholders on their, on their calendars in order to accommodate this, so.
What I was going to say was, given your direction tonight, I think we, we can approach our shortlist as determined by the, your feedback tonight, get the responses from them. But at a parallel time, we need guidance from maybe if you, if Sam, the chairman, and, and Matt, and possibly Jamie, just get together and figure out what the calendar needs to be to hit where we need to hit. Cause we're going to need to engage them, negotiate, sign the deal and, and, and break ground this year. So the calendar is important. And I think, you know, while we're talking to these, the shortlist bidders, we can get the calendar squared away.
Yep. And, and on, on Counselor Adams' return from, from her leave, I, I would expect her to be in, in that role more than I. But I'm not even sure how much anyone from the council needs to be directly involved in it. It's, it's, it sounds really, Matt, it's, it's more something for, for you and probably Maureen and, and Sam to coordinate on, so, and Perry, so. I, I don't want to, I don't want to pull the plug on this. If there's important additional information that is either needed to convey or decisions that are needed to be made, but we're, we're running on an hour and 25 minutes of this discussion. And I, I do want to make sure we get, get onto the rest of our agenda, so. So, committee, it sounds like you have the direction you need. We're, we're starting to coalesce around a, a, a general timeframe that we're pushing in the direction of. Tom, you know, really appreciate your forthrightness about your individual situation and appreciate, you know, you being transparent about all that. So Matt will, again, go, go out to our, our outside counsel tomorrow just to get some further opinion on that. So if in the meantime, Tom, you could, you could kind of stand down from your involvement. And if, if there's anything that comes up that you think requires your involvement, I, I would maybe touch base with, with Matt for some guidance on that. Is there anything else on, on this that anybody wants to add before we move off of this topic?
No, I think we have the direction that we, that we, that we needed and that we asked for. So thank you so much for your, for your time, councilors, and look forward to moving this forward.
Yeah, and the last thing, I, I just want to reiterate and underscore what was stated earlier a couple of times. The body of work here is incredibly impressive. The council and everybody involved are really appreciative of, of the time and energy that you all have put into this and, and the talent that you've brought to the, to the, the role on this committee. It's, it's really quite impressive. And, you know, regardless of either direction that was chosen here, it was clear that there was an incredible amount of analysis and thinking that went into, you know, getting us to this point. So I know that there have been sort of frustrating fits and starts with some of this work, dating back to the sort of original pulling the committee together and, and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, from where I stand, you know, to see this level of, of detail and, and professional output is pretty, pretty impressive from a volunteer committee. So I, I think, I think the work is to be envied and could potentially be a model for other committees to, to, to work from as well. So, so thank you. I just want to say thank you all for your time on it. It's, it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. So seeing no other comments or discussion on that topic, we'll move on to our second agenda item, which we should get through in no time whatsoever. It's short-term rental ordinance amendments. And I know that there's probably participants from the public that are looking to chime in on this as well. So we'll get to that in just a second. Just by way of introduction, the ordinance committee has been at work on this since going back into last year, both based on sort of citizen request and, and, and input from different folks that had raised some concerns as well as the direct direction stemming from the comprehensive plan, updated comprehensive plan that was approved last year. So after a lot of very productive workshops and meetings, the recommended amendments that have been brought forward here tonight for us to discuss are included in, in the information that you all have. I want to open it up to public comment. And before doing that, make sure that everybody, for the public, is aware that this is really, you know, the first time the full council is, is taking an opportunity to get into this. So I know that there's a lot of folks that have been very good participants at, at the ordinance committee level. And there's, there's probably points that you've raised in those meetings that you want to reiterate here tonight and in future meetings. You're certainly welcome to do that. I ask that in this meeting, though, we're going to, we're going to stick to our three-minute rule pretty quickly, pretty closely, rather. And also, it, it won't be kind of the, the free-flowing back and forth that, you know, was, was useful for us in the ordinance committee meetings. But for the purposes of the town council discussion, we want to, we want to not have sort of the interruptive comments and back and forth dialogue. So, so anyway, if you would like to speak on this issue, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom meeting. And you will be recognized. And if you could just give us your name and limit, name and address or affiliation and limit your comments to about three minutes in length. So the first name I see up is Louise Davis. So Matt, if you could cue her up. And Louise, go ahead.
You hear me?
We can. Go ahead. Thank you.
Well, thanks to all of you. I know this has really been a touchy issue and a difficult one. So thanks to all of you and for all the, the good work you've been doing. And I guess what I'd like to just say in my three minutes is introduce myself. I'm Louise Richardson-Davis. I've lived off Old Ocean House Road since I was born and my mother and grandmother and one thing or another. So very familiar with the Cape and glad to be here, actually am here right now. And my point is just to encourage you all to focus directly on what will both address the problem issues and satisfy or address the concerns of a majority of the people and taxpayers in the town. Surely this can be done in good faith without taking a hammer to the many non-resident taxpayers like myself who would like to correct these problems, work with you to correct these problems and do renting in a very responsible, lawful, permitting, following sort of a way. And I guess what really strikes me is that if people, even primary owners, as well as the non-resident owners are not here at, at the house when a renter comes, I know that's an issue for many people are concerned. And by the way, I, I really support, I mean, I understand what it must be like to be next to a neighbor that's just renters are running amok. So I sympathize with that. But if, if we do rent in such a way where we could use the, the expertise of property managers that would work with us. And I, I would think it'd be a great help to the town because they'd, they'd be screening for clients that are going to fit the character of the town, families or people that can appreciate the area. And they'd be educating the people like me about the fact that I need to get a rental permit. And they'd be keeping records of the rentals for each owner. And they'd be responding to neighbor complaints, which would certainly help you all with the, the whole complaint management issue. And so I, I would, I just would really urge you to include that as a category or option or possibility that working with qualified property managers, not a ad hoc person who says, I've got my house, I'm a property manager and I'll, I'll rent to, to the bros that want to have a bachelor party there. But somebody that's really professional in, in the area is, is really worthy of consideration. And I, I, I think we are worthy taxpayers here and, and who want to be responsible. And, and we just really hope you'll consider us and whether we have to increase the minimum stay length or, or do, do other things that might be necessary to make it work for everybody. I just hope. Thank you.
Thank you. And Louise, if I could just ask you to provide your address for us?
51 Old Mill Road.
And just a quick follow-up and if, if additional speakers wouldn't mind doing the same. So if you, if you are a current short-term rental operator or host, if you wouldn't mind letting us know if you are comfortable with it, I'm not asking, you're not, you're not required to. But if you wouldn't mind letting us know sort of what category you might fall into from those that have been sort of outlined or described in the proposed amendments, I think that might be helpful for the council to understand the point of view of your comments. So if you're comfortable with that, I'd appreciate it, but.
I am a non-primary resident owner. Although it used to be for a long time, but not now. And I would like to have the ability to do short-term rentals if possible. I understand that, you know, the turnovers of certainly not a weekend, but and maybe even seven days is, is tough. And I, so I guess that's the category. I mean, I feel that, that we're excluded from the current recommendations right now.
Okay, thank you so much. Next up to speak is Penny Pollard. Matt, if you could cue her up, please?
You should be good.
Go ahead, Penny. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for accepting my comments. I just wanted to, one, respond to a discussion that I had heard. And it's regarding statistics that that I garnered from the U.S. Department of Education website about elementary school registrations. Because I had heard a comment at one time that part of what was driving these changes had to do with reserving stock for young families and, you know, to increase registration at the elementary school. And, you know, elementary school registration is down more than 5% from 2000 to 2018 in eight states nationwide, including all of New England. Maine, New Hampshire and Vermont are all down at least 13%. So, you know, I don't think any of these things have, this primary school registration is certainly not being driven by short-term rental regulations. My second comment was that I really hope that the council will include a provision in the rewritten ordinance on short-term rentals that would allow an application process for an appeal, something like a zoning board of appeals to be allowed to continue being permitted to rent a property that has been compliant in an ongoing way, no complaints, responsible Cape resident and neighbor, rental house owner. I just think that there, it's likely that the majority of rental homeowners in Cape Elizabeth have been compliant. And I've been perplexed by the discussion that seems to be driven largely by a few complaints to some properties that have been out of compliance a number of times. So I, I just feel like we're all getting painted with a broad brush here. And I regret that and hope that there might be a way to have an appeal process. Thank you for the possibility of participating in the discussion.
Thanks, Penny. And your address, if you don't mind, please?
Yep, 3 Peebles Point Lane.
Thank you.
And I am a rental property owner.
Thank you. Next is Melissa Burke. Matt, if you could cue her up? Go ahead, Melissa.
Thanks so much. I'm at 7 Point Road. And I'm a non-primary resident, short-term renter. I rent out short-term. And I'd like to echo the comments of the past two speakers. And I, I feel that I've been very heard by this committee and I thank you very much for that. Though I know that it's difficult to wrap folks like us into this, I want to continue to express my desire to responsibly short-term rent, even though I'm not a full-time resident here. And I think that it can be done responsibly. I think we've done it responsibly. And I think my neighbors here would agree. And just want to pass along the fact that some beautiful, beautiful things happen because of short-term rentals. I'm able to continue to plow back into the economy by buying locally, having local upholsters and local fence mender, local folks who I otherwise, probably I wouldn't have hired because I'm doing short-term rental and I can, and I want to keep up the property and I can afford to do that through, through this economic mechanism. And then also, I think all of you saw in the Cape Courier how we had, my neighbors had a short-term renter here that it was two men coming to, for the birth of their baby by surrogate in Maine. And they were able to short-term rent in our community. And I just think that that kind of thing really adds, especially at the time of COVID, we were able to, we couldn't spend a lot of time together. But my, my daughter was able to send them a message by chalk drawing on the, on the, on the street there. And it was just really beautiful. I think we, it, we, we forget that we're adding to the community by sharing our community. So, uh, thank you for hearing my concerns.
And Melissa, thank you. I don't think we got your address.
Oh, it's 7 Point Road, 7 Point Road.
Thank you. Next is Mary Ann Lynch. Mary Ann?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to say, first of all, Mary Ann Lynch, 2 Old Colony Lane. I am a year-round Cape Elizabeth resident, taxpayer and voter. I've been here 34 years. 34 years ago, we didn't have short-term rentals. And the short-term rentals are a business. They really are changing the character of our residential neighborhoods. If I wanted to live in a neighborhood of short-term summer rentals, I would have purchased a home at Higgins Beach or at Old Orchard Beach. I don't object to renters renting for 30 days or more. Those tenants have not been problematic. And I think that would allow property owners to make some financial use of their property. But otherwise, I hope you will look at this as an opportunity to keep Cape Elizabeth the way that it's been, a, a, a town of neighborhoods that are close. And it has never, it has not been a summer resort, at least not since the turn of the century and the old casino. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Next up is listed as James King. I'm guessing it's Deborah King. But you're up next. Go ahead. We can't hear you. There you go. Yep.
I'm Deborah. Hi, everyone. I'm Deborah King. I live at 125 Old Ocean House Road. Thank you all. This is really cool that we still get to meet in this way. It's so nice to hear these comments online like this and even without faces, to just think about what people are saying, quite heartfelt across the board. I think I do disagree that the community hasn't been a resort-type place for a long time. I think it, it, part of its history is that, you know, farming and, and having visitors, having people have summer homes. I think that's been very common. Of course, now we have this new, new element that is increasing as vacations and people traveling increase. We have a unique situation. I'm a homestay. I live in my house and I just rent out a couple of rooms. And it is very, it is not the most common kind of short-term stay. Many of the things you all talk about do not apply to us at all. I don't think it's wise to discontinue the homestay category because of the differences. And even, you know, for example, in this time of no guests, I couldn't get unemployment. Even though I'm self-employed and all this good stuff, they just don't know what to do with us in this little income that we make. The other thing is that as a homestay, most of our guests are here for, for a couple of nights. We don't get people for a full week, anything like that. So limiting us is a, is a problem. But what we provide are things like, you know, for the spring vacationers, we provide a place for Mother's Day weekends, mom and daughter weekends, things like that. You also know that I live on two acres, lots of property on the street, very far away from my neighbors. And you've received letters from our neighbors who support what we're doing because we're doing it responsibly. And I know that's what you're trying to encourage. So I thank you for that. I very much want to encourage you to make sure that these short-term stays are supervised. I think that's the deal. And that's what we're all realizing is this can't be a top that's just sent off spinning because things do happen. And that's what I wanted to say. And I just want to thank you again for spending a lovely night at your computers in your homes. So thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Deborah. Next up, I'm not sure the name that's listed here is Law Robics. I'm not sure who that is, but if you could introduce yourself and go ahead. Yep.
Sheldon Goldman. I am a non-resident at 24 McKinney Point Road. We bought the home about 12 years ago in Maine, famously known as the Vacation State. So I think that kind of puts to bed the idea of whether or not this is a vacation destination. To me, this is a very basic fundamental issue of fairness and whether or not you can discriminate against non-resident owners. I mean, it seems to me what you're saying is the locals are going to get favored over the non-locals, but you can charge the non-locals the same price because we both pay the same amount of taxes. So I think it's like a fundamental issue of fairness. It's probably a fundamental issue of equal protection under the United States Constitution. And while I know that these are difficult issues, I think we have to evolve to the next place where we're not making these discriminatory categories. That's something I fundamentally wanted to share with the board because it's a very basic concept. I brought it to your attention. I thank you. And it's going to be in the background the entire time this, this is going to be considered.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I see Jenny Aronson. You're up next. Go ahead, Jenny.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name's Jenny Aronson. I live at 27 Lawson Road. And I've spoken at multiple meetings, but you said to speak up again so everyone can hear the issues. First of all, I just want to say, when we moved here in 1997, Lawson Road was a neighborhood. There was no such thing as Airbnb. Everybody pretty much lived here, except we had some older folks who went to Florida in the winter. And kids could run around. It felt like a very safe neighborhood. And I felt like I could be in my yard by myself. I felt like I knew who everybody was if there was a problem. I don't think that you can really tell me that you can rent responsibly by screening people. Nobody knows what a stranger is really like when they come in. We have had trouble next door with bachelor parties and drinking and all that kind of thing. I just don't like having strangers around. I'm not here as a showpiece for them about how great. I'm not here as a showpiece for them about how great it is to live in Maine. I really find it resentful that they want to come and see where I live. I find it invasive. And it's very hard when somebody is violating your privacy or creating a disturbance to call and complain. I don't think it should be my responsibility to call a manager or the, the police really don't want to get involved. I don't want to spend my weekends in the summer managing a problem. So please don't put that on me. And finally, to the last comment, I don't think it's discriminatory at all to favor primary residence owners. These are people who live on the street, who we deal with and we share the space. And if they have a reason that they need to earn income, if they have a health problem, if they've lost their job, if they need to cover their taxes, they're retired, I totally respect and would support them to do that. But somebody who has a secondary residence, you know, that's already a luxury that a lot of us can't afford. And to use that as a business in a residential area and use that business, I, I would think that would be something that the law should look into. This is a residential area. It's not zoned for business. And there are compromises. We don't need to have cleaning teams and strangers and people walking around with red cups and talking loudly in big groups and having reunions. That's very discomforting. And I would just like to say, I do not think it is discriminatory. If you want to have a secondary residence here, I think that's wonderful. But this is where I live and pay my taxes and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Next up is Scott Dobos. Matt, if you could cue Scott up. Go ahead, Scott.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all, all safe and well. As Jamie said, my name is Scott Dobos. I live at 8 Farmhouse Road in Scarborough. I, I run the rental division for Legacy Properties, Sotheby's International Realty. I am a professional rental manager. That was referenced earlier in the, in the meeting. And I, I am a person that screens our guests and take it upon myself to present the most qualified guests to the owners I do work with. Currently, I work with 14, 14 to 15 Cape Elizabeth property owners of different, you know, different purposes with their rentals. Some are short-term rentals, some are long-term rentals, some are monthly rentals, some are year-round rentals, some are kind of quote-unquote the Cape Elizabeth school year rentals. And, you know, I, I'm selective with the owners I work with. I, I work with the owners that, you know, fully understand my approach to, to renting their, their Cape Elizabeth properties. And, you know, my, my stance that, you know, I'd rather have a property empty than to put the wrong people into the home that would disrupt the neighborhood is something, you know, is very real to me. I don't own any of the properties I work with, and I'm very fortunate to, to, you know, be able to work with these properties. And, and if I, you know, put one of those reference bachelor parties, you know, or guests, you know, making a ruckus, carrying those red cups in any of the homes that I work with, that's probably the last time I'll ever work with that property. So, you know, my, my point of view is, is drastically different. While, you know, I don't have skin in the game in the sense that this property is mine, you know, my, my approach is, is from a professional approach to do the best I can for the owners that hire me to represent their property and to bring people into the neighborhoods that are referenced. And, you know, I, I take it very seriously, belonging to the Vacation Rental Manager Association. I study vacation rentals, the philosophy, the psychology, how to do the best job I can for these owners that I work with. And not, not every rental in Maine or the country or the world is, is run the same. There are individual property owners that do an incredible job. There's also individual property owners that do a terrible job. I think that's probably pretty evident from some of the properties that have been complained about over, you know, the last few years. And yeah, I, I appreciate the, the work you've done. I, I am sympathetic for the, for the people that live next to these problem properties. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. Next up is John Bolts. John, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question for the council. Has there been any more data gathering about the, what the problem is and the impacts that you're seeking to mitigate that's described in your purpose? And if so, where is that? And if there hasn't been any further information to describe that, I'm curious as to why that is. I'll just leave it at that. If you'd point me in that direction. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I'm going to keep going with questions to try and get that out of the way. And then in our discussion, hopefully circle back to get you the answer you're looking for. Is there anybody who has not yet spoken? Go ahead. I thought I saw one. Yeah, I thought so. Craig, you're up as having not spoken yet. So your name and address, please.
Unmute here.
Go ahead, Craig.
Yes, hi, everybody. Thank you very much. My name is Craig Cooper. I live at 150 Ocean House Road here in Cape Elizabeth. I've been a longtime resident. I am a landlord and I am also a property manager here in town. I've spoken at many of the committee meetings. I've sent a number of emails. I appreciate all the work that is being done to try to mitigate the problems that have been plaguing some of the areas in Cape Elizabeth. But my concerns are based on the fact that I think that the problems are a small amount of the short-term rentals. And some of the discussions and the recommendations that are being brought forward here are extreme by nature for the, the problem areas that have been, that have brought this all about. Primarily, I think that the intent of people who have taken and rented places in Cape Elizabeth and turned them into hotels have caused a lot of this problem. And one of my concerns as a property manager, I represent Six Point Road, which is owned by Mary Giftos, who owns two houses here in Cape Elizabeth. It's her guest house. She uses it as a guest house, has a lot of family and friends that come in the summertime. And we short-term rent it sometimes to help pay for the taxes, et cetera. We've never had a problem there. Just because her house is one-third of a mile down the road, she doesn't fall under these categories. If her guest house was next door, adjacent with an adjacent abutting lot line, that would work and could be used under the short-term rental. So I think that's a bit of a bias as well. I agree that Cape Elizabeth is also a summer area and vacation area. As spoken earlier, a license plate says Vacation Land. So as you struggle through this, I also want to bring up the point that the timing on this, I mean, with, with what the town has done and with the 14, 14-day quarantine that's going on, the short-term rental has already pretty marked in Cape Elizabeth, has been basically killed for the, you know, the majority of this upcoming summer. And we're dealing with people who have already canceled for this year or cannot come for this year for the obvious with this pandemic that we're dealing with and who are trying to rent and already booking for the next season, for the summer of 2021. And I remember when I was meeting with this committee and talking with the committee, and they were considering, thinking about when any new ordinances would take effect. They were sensitive to the fact that people had already rented in the summer of 2020. And now with the, with, with the pandemic, as I say, that whole thing has been thrown into the summer of 2021. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that has yet to speak that wishes to offer any comment? I'll very brief, I'm not looking to get into a back and forth. And I suspect that, and I'm sorry, I forgot your first name under the Law Robics handle on the meeting. And I'm not looking to get back into a back and forth. I suspect, I saw your hand go up right after Ms. Aronson's comments. I suspect that you've got something to say in rebuttal to that. I'd, I'd really rather not draw this out in that fashion. So if, if you have something else to say, go ahead. But the purpose of the comment period is not to get into sort of a back and forth debate, so.
I realized I didn't actually use the entire three minutes, so I thought I could just. So it goes back to this very basic issue of discrimination, right? Owners, residents versus non-residents. You know, we pay $34,000 in taxes. That's about right. I up slightly. We don't use the school system. So we're subsidizing your school system. So it's, it seems to me that in one hand, you like us there because we're happy to be there to subsidize the school system and we're not using, that's a very positive for you. On the other hand, you would then take away certain rights that the residents of the town would have. It's a very, very unfair bargain. And I thought I didn't make that very clear in my mind as to how unfair the bargain was because we're there to support the, the village. We're just not going to get all the benefits. And that's what I wanted around that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who's yet to speak that would wish to offer any comment? I'm not seeing any hands raised in the queue. Okay, like I said, this is by no means going to be the last meeting or discussion point that we have on this, but I appreciate everybody's input, those that spoke tonight, as well as, as was indicated in the meeting packet, we've received a substantial amount of communication on this, both leading up to the meeting by email as well as through the course of the many meetings that the ordinance committee has held on this. So seeing no additional comment, I'm going to ask the counselors, I know most everyone, obviously, the members of the ordinance committee have been up to their eyeballs in this. I know Councilor Deveraux has attended some meetings, Councilor Abelson has. Is there anybody that would like me to, at the outset, just sort of walk through purpose, why we're doing this and what the, the, the sort of top-level highlights are? Or does everybody feel like they've got that and we don't need to belabor that? I'm seeing heads nodded that everybody gets it. Okay. I just quickly want to answer or try to answer the question that John Bolts raised around further data gathering. John, I'm not specifically aware, and I know that, I don't think Maureen has joined us on the, on the meeting tonight. I'm not specifically aware of any other information that's been gathered other than what has, has stood in the record and, and has been available with, oh, I see Maureen is here, sorry. You know, has been included in, in the various meeting materials to date. I, I think, the last time you brought this up, I offered information that was, you know, publicly available information that had been publicly reported by the Press Herald about the growth of the short-term rental market over the last number of years. And, and there were some very specific data points in that about the number of rentals and how that had grown over time over the last three or four years. I know that information was sought and provided about actual numbers of complaints. And information has been provided about number of registered short-term rental operators versus those that are presumed to be operating based on listing information that was mined by a member of the, the town who wound up doing quite a bit of that work. And I know, I think, I think you've been involved in some of that as well. So I, I'm not specifically aware of any other, any other data that's been gathered beyond that or that the committee, you know, was, was certainly referencing during the course of our discussions. Maureen, if there's anything you want to add to that, by all means. But I don't think, I think I. Maureen, are you there?
Yes, I am. I have nothing to add.
Okay. So I would, I would, I guess punctuate that to say the work on this is not done. If there's additional information that's deemed necessary or, you know, is, is offered to us, we'll certainly evaluate that and factor it into continuing discussion and formulation of, of the amendments here. So, that being said, since everybody is generally aware of the purpose, I think is generally clear on what the highlights of the amendments are, I'm happy to just open it up to conversation among the council to offer any comments or ask questions or the like. So, Counselor Straw.
Hi. So as some of you may know, I don't fully support these amendments. And what I would propose just as a starting point is I'd like the town planner to kind of weigh in or give us guidance on her understanding of how zoning ordinances are supposed to operate. In particular, the way that I have approached these ordinances is you have a zoning ordinance that basically lays out like your plan for how you're going to organize your town. And it spells out a bunch of districts, and each district is supposed to serve a purpose. And what I'd, I'd like to hear the town planner kind of explain to us how that's supposed to operate and how that's supposed to inform what uses are allowed in individual districts. And then I'd like to, I'd like to hear what are the purposes of our residential districts? And I'd like to hear how these proposed changes accomplish the purposes of the residential districts. Because that's, that's what's been missing from our discussion up until now.
Maureen?
Sure. Not, not too much to ask there. So I think most of you are aware that 98, actually, about 75% of the town is zoned residential. About a third of it is, so a little less than 75%, is wetland. So you, you basically have a town that is almost all residential. Your largest zoning district is your RA district. That's 50% of the town. That's considered your so-called rural area, and the minimum lot size is two acres. Your next residential district, which is, it's about 15% of the town, is the RC district. That's your compact residential district. Minimum lot size is half an acre. And in between those, you have a small amount, I think it's 7%, which is the RB. It's your growth areas. It's where the new development is going in. And you're not seeing a lot of the short-term rentals going in those areas. So the vast majority of your short-term rentals are going in your residency districts and in your residency districts. And not surprisingly, most of those are on the waterfront. But maybe a little surprisingly, more and more and more of them are not on the waterfront. They are, they're, they're in anyone's neighborhood. So every district has a purpose statement, and I've tried to touch on the idea of the RA being the rural and the RC being the compact. And, you know, planners have evolved over time on how they consider designating zoning districts. And we have done a lot more with mixed use. But in Cape, you are still pretty much looking at predominantly residential uses in those zones. So the changes you're talking about, and I, I'm not, I'm guessing at what Counselor Straw wants to get to. But I think anytime you're looking at changes to the zoning, you want to think about the purposes of those zoning districts. And the, the RA and the RC, while they are residential districts, have never been purely residential uses. There have always been some uses that you would consider not necessarily residential. But you want the predominant use to be residential. And it's okay to have non-residential uses, but they should, for the most part, complement your residential use. So did I, did I get what you wanted me to get to?
Exactly. Yep, perfectly. So then the next step in conjunction with that is if we understand what the purposes are and that the uses are supposed to complement and fulfill that purpose, looking at, as you noted, we, we're not pure on, let's use the RC district or the RA district, where we do allow commercial uses in. But when do we allow them in? What criteria do we apply in allowing them in? And how do these proposed uses compare to how the other uses have been allowed in with consistency? So for example, hours of operation, do we, do we deem short-term rentals to have more or less impact than a seven? a seven-kid daycare center that operates during daylight hours only? Do we consider short-term rentals having more or less impact than an empty lot with a park bench in it? And if it has more impact, should we not apply more stringent rules? Or if it has less impact, then perhaps the rules should be less? So I'm looking for that consistency in assessment and application.
Are you looking for a response, Chris, or is that a declarative statement?
The extent that Maureen wants to weigh in on whether that's something we should be striving for with our ordinance or not, that would be helpful. But then to the extent that anyone wants to argue that the proposal is consistent, that the proposal does treat things appropriately, then we can get to that. But otherwise, you know that I wanted different rules, so. But at this point on, I'm basically going to shut up, and I've raised my points. My points are out there, and all of you can debate to reach your conclusions.
Counselor Garvin?
Yes.
If I could just add to what Counselor Straw said. The policy decision is really up to the council, but I would advise you that if you have a certain thing you want, you should say that's what you want. And you should not rely on the potential good behavior of people. I believe strongly in articulating performance standards. So instead of saying that, you know, we hope someone's going to be a good neighbor, we expect someone's going to be a good neighbor. You articulate what it means to be a good neighbor so that that can be enforced. And also to think about, when you're doing enforcement, you want to be as objective as possible with your standards. Because the more subjective they are, the more difficult they are to enforce. And potentially, the more expensive they are for the town to enforce. And I do want to touch on one other thing. There was one commenter who asked if there could be an appeal process. What the ordinance, the zoning ordinance currently says is, if a use is not allowed, there is no opportunity to go to the zoning board and appeal that so that you can get permission to have a use that the council has chosen not to include on the list of permitted uses.
Penny, I see your hand raised. I want to jump in for just a slight resetting of the table. And to say a couple of things about the process of the ordinance committee. One was that I thought that this was a highly productive and constructive approach that we took. And it involved a lot of really, really good back and forth dialogue and discussion. Had a tremendous amount of good input from people in the community, many of whom held widely varying opinions. But throughout the process, were highly respectful of one another. I thought very caring in how they presented their point of view. But even in those cases where their view differed from somebody else, respect was always, was always present in the conversation. None of the three counselors, myself included, on the ordinance committee were in full agreement on any of the points that are here presented. And in the course of coming up with these amendments and recommendations, we did so in good faith and as honest brokers about what we think is the best you know, potential compromise of a lot of conflicting priorities and desired outcomes. So Chris, understanding the point that you just made when you led off, I wanted to jump into, number one, make that clear for everybody. But number two, directly to you, you know, I might challenge you on, I know that I've come to learn in your, you know, your two-plus years on the council, that the way you tend to vote on things is in rather absolutes. And so if there's one thing that you disagree with about something, then, and I understand that, that's a perfectly understandable position to take.
Personality flow.
I don't think that that's going to change, but especially for the nature of a workshop discussion. I'd like to keep and continue that spirit of sort of open dialogue about these things as best as possible. When we get to ultimately voting on these amendments, I understand what way you're likely to go based on having sat with you in all the meetings on this, but I think that that is probably the best way to proceed to make sure points of view are well represented. I'm not picking on you, and I know.
No, no, totally. Can I just?
Yeah, go ahead, and then I'm going to go to Penny.
Totally. Apologize to color my point. My point is, I want us to have that mindset that I discussed in deciding the outstanding issues, which include, should these be subject to conditional use review? How many days should we be talking about? I raise that not to say like, we should throw out everything that the committee said. It's that in assessing this, I would love for us to use this mindset in deciding where to decide on these outstanding issues. But I totally agree. I think the committee worked very hard. I think we all worked in good faith. I loved the input we got from all the various members of the community. And they changed my views on a number of things where I think I was probably wrong where I started with, and I think I ended up in a more nuanced position. But yeah, I was trying to set the, here's the mental framework that I use when I come to this decision-making process.
Penny, go ahead.
Yeah, Chris, that's basically what I was going to ask you, is that are you asking that as we go through this, that we test where conditional uses can occur? And, okay, that's where I thought you were headed. And so therefore, I think that for the full education of everybody, that if Maureen could talk about implications of conditional uses. Because I think we all need to understand what that, how that all can play out. Because I don't disagree with your position that there are places where conditional uses would make sense. But what are the implications of those decisions as we head down that road?
Would you like me to respond?
Yeah, go ahead, Maureen.
Okay, so Counselor Straw has often brought up the suggestion that short-term rentals should be reviewed as a conditional use. There are some, with respect for Counselor Straw, there are some problems with that. One of them is that conditional use, once granted, tends to run with the land. And if the intent is to allow abutters to have continuing input into the issuance of a permit, you would have to do something to make that a periodic re-renewal of that conditional use permit. It should be in the interest of disclosure. I do not staff the zoning board. Code enforcement officer does. And so I have run this issue by him. And not surprisingly, he is less than enthusiastic. We have between 120 and 150 short-term rentals. And assuming that less than half of those are primary residences, and then maybe only a third of those end up having to need a conditional use permit, it still is going to be a tremendous burden on the zoning board with questionable real value. I would ask all of the counselors to look at the conditional use standards of review. Most of them do not address the issues that neighbors have had the most problems with. So the concern with loud behavior and parking and the other undesirable not showing up when a tenant is about to check in aren't really going to be dealt with by the conditional use standards. So those are the problematic situations of those. And I will say that I, as a planner, I have serious concerns making anything a conditional use because the standards tend to be somewhat vague, and they tend to be more difficult to defend in court. Again, my recommendation would be that instead of relying on the conditional use review, if there's something specific you have concerns about, write that as a standard. You know, if the concern is that, you know, too many people are partying at 11 o'clock at night, then put in a requirement that there's only a certain number of people that are allowed to be outside during after 11:00 PM. Because that's a lot easier black and white to enforce. That's just an example. Does that address your issue?
I think part of the conversations that we've had around conditional uses had to do with if we set a minimum or kind of a baseline for number of days that can be rented, so 30 days or whatever it might be, that one of the applications of conditional use that we had discussed was that somebody could come forward and ask that that be increased to 90 or 180 days. But then, at that point in time, there would be an assessment of the impact of that particular short-term rental on that particular neighborhood. And I think that that's where the conversation about conditional uses really revolved, what that revolved around. And so, and I understand your point, Maureen, about what does this do to code enforcement? And as I've said before, that if we start overlaying things such as this, then it does say that code enforcement is not staffed properly in order to address this part of our ordinance. So therefore, it ripples into fees associated with short-term rentals, and how much it would cost for somebody to go for that conditional use. That's kind of the way I see it could potentially play out.
So Counselor Jordan, do you, excuse me, Counselor Garvin, would you like me to respond to that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'm looking at the standards for conditional use review, and Counselor Jordan is correct. The discussion was that if you capped the number of days that someone could operate a short-term rental at 30, that you might be able to have more days if you've got conditional use review. In order to get a conditional use review, you've got to go to the zoning board. You have to do a scale drawing, including existing and proposed buildings, proposed natural features, driveways, parking areas. You can imagine how a property owner of a single-family home is going to resist having to prepare information when they're not proposing any exterior changes. So they're already going to be a little irritated. And then you have to demonstrate that the proposed use will not create hazardous traffic conditions, that it will not create unsanitary conditions by reason of sewage disposal, that it will not adversely affect the value of adjacent properties. Now, that's the golden one. That's the one that people will fight until the end of time and how they interpret it. That the proposed site plan and layout are compatible with adjacent property uses in the comprehensive plan. So you can imagine someone making the argument, well, I've been renting this short-term rental for 30 days. Obviously, it's in compliance with all of these standards. And then having many abutters say that this is going to dramatically degrade the value of their property. So, you know, we don't, I have not made any new things, conditional uses, when I've been drafting ordinances just because I have serious concerns, and I have spoken to our town attorney, and he hasn't said no, that, you know, these are tough, these are tough standards to defend in court.
Thank you, Maureen.
I'm going to jump in here with a number of points I want to make. So the first thing is what we're doing here is really to address two separate issues. Number one is to respond to concerns that have been brought to the council around unwanted behavior in neighborhoods that's associated with short-term rentals. And then the other is, you know, to be consistent with the direction that was approved in our comprehensive plan within the housing goals of that plan around maintaining the viability of housing stock and variety of housing stock and things of that nature. I did hear somebody from the public tonight raise the question, which is the first time I've heard it, and sitting in all the meetings that we've been in, and I don't recall seeing anything that specifically cited it as a rationale of looking to boost the elementary school population. I don't recall that ever being a specific objective or part of discussion. And in any questions or discussion that we had around housing stock, there was discussion of long-term rental viability of people that might be looking to downsize. You know, all sorts of other multiple examples, but certainly no stated purpose on either part of the committee or intention of the ordinance to specifically address that point.
Just very quickly?
Sure, Chris.
I assume that was based off of my comments, which I think Counselor Adams also kind of made a similar comment, which might have also been it. But it was basically the observation that there is a holistic, there's a, what am I calling it? The virtuous housing cycle. And what it is, is it's interruption of the housing cycle in the turnover that normally happens. And I think it may have been misconstrued as somehow being needed to boost school enrollment, but the point wasn't school enrollment. I apologize if it came across that way. It's that there's this normal cycle that occurs with housing stock. And this is a disruption to that cycle. One could argue, and I think Penny made this point before, and then I'm going to shut up because I know I said I was going to be short, that perhaps this is a new cycle that's been established.
Yeah. I just wanted to be clear, and for the purposes, since it was brought up in this specific meeting, that at no point was that an objective looking to be satisfied, is the point I'm looking to make. My position on these amendments is, they are not perfect. But sort of echoing along the points that I made earlier about the nature of the work that the committee did, I think that they go a long, long way towards solving the issues that are the primary ones that were to be addressed. So, you know, number one, this would dramatically change how we currently regulate short-term rental units, in so much as that every single operator of a short-term rental would have to have a permit. So that's not something that we do today. You know, based on the current definitions of what type of short-term rental operator you are, you may or may not need to have a permit. So by virtue of these amendments, we would require everybody to have a permit. What that does, it eliminates the confusion of who does or does not need a permit. It gives us a really clear and realistic picture of what amount of short-term rental activity we have going on in town and provides us the ability to benchmark against that. So to the question that John Volz raised earlier about data and things like that, we would have a much more true view of, you know, the amount of activity, the amount of properties, and what was going on on a year-over-year basis with them. And it also would deliver the revenue that we would need to support the compliance measures that are outlined in the amendments. So that also goes to the point about compliance, where these amendments would allow for the mechanism where we would contract with a much-needed third-party compliance vendor to supplement the efforts of the code enforcement officer. Today, if all Ben did every day of the week, eight hours a day, was work on short-term rentals, he still wouldn't have enough time to address all of the things that are involved with that. By increasing that enforcement and that compliance, we increase our ability to cite and penalize the offenders that are falling outside of that compliance. And by raising and increasing the fees that would be associated with the permitting process, we would make it expense-neutral, so there's not a negative financial impact to the town by having to contract with the third party. Obviously, a big component of the amendments is the primary residency as the primary threshold for eligibility. I think that this achieves a number of different things. Number one, it reduces. Number one, it reduces the speculative real estate investment that we have seen going on, as evidenced, you know, from realtors that have been spoken to throughout this process, that, you know, people that are buying once either long-term rental homes or, or primary residences and turning them into strictly short-term rentals. This would greatly reduce that and, I think, satisfy the goal that I said that was outlined in the, in the comprehensive plan. It would ultimately, you know, reduce the number of short-term rental guests in the calendar year the way it's currently worded, because number one, you'd be reducing the number of potential short-term rental units available, but also shortening the window in which they could operate. That is one point, as, as Chris and Penny both know, that I actually disagree with, the, the current limits that are, that are outlined in the ordinance. It dramatically will reduce the amount and likelihood of unwanted behavior at the short-term rentals. And it, it does not eliminate it entirely, eliminate that risk entirely, but it would dramatically reduce it. And the reason it would is because if it's your primary residence, you have a lot more skin in the game than if you're an absentee landlord that is strictly renting out for a business purpose. And so, if, if it's your primary residence, you're going to care a lot more about what goes on there than somebody who has no other interest other than drawing revenue off of the property. The last thing is that it would allow the responsible property owners that are looking for a supplemental use and a supplemental income associated with their property, the ability to do that. We heard from a number of people during the committee's process that spoke to the fact that they're gone for a month or six weeks in the summer at their lake house or, or something like that, and that they are able to gain needed revenue to either pay their taxes or for some other reason by having the ability to rent out for that short amount of time, relatively short in a calendar year, but that it's still their primary residence the rest of the year. So that was, I think, a very important thing for me to, to have, to, to allow those people to continue to do that. So, you know, those are the, the really, the key points that the amendments address. And like I said, the, at the beginning of my comments, it's, it's not anything that is going to be 100% perfect. But I think in this case, it's a very good example of a great deal of progress being preferred for me over trying to come up with something that's 100% perfect. So... There are others that want to offer any discussion or comments? Jeremy?
I'd just like to thank the ordinance committee for the work that you guys have put into this. I, you know, as, as you said, Jamie, not 100% on this revisions. I think I, you know, I, my preference would be for something that's a little bit tighter and has fewer, fewer provisions in it. But I, I think this is a good compromise that meets the objectives that we set out to, to, when we, when we started looking at this. I, I guess I would just like to weigh in on the conditional use and the rental period caps. I think, for me, the, the need for third-party enforcement is kind of a no-brainer. We, we, that, we need that as part of this ordinance. My, I, I tend to agree with Maureen. I, I'm not in favor of building in conditional use, building this in as a conditional use. I also would tend to, in that range of two weeks to 180 days, I, I can certainly live with 90. My preference would be to, to have that limit a lot closer to two weeks than 180 days, though.
Go ahead, Valerie.
Okay, I also want to thank the committee. Did so much work, and all of the people who have come to the meetings. It's been really phenomenal hearing from everybody in the community that's come forward, and I think it's given, I know it's given me additional insight into what we're doing here, just by hearing from everybody. My, I'm not in favor of building in a conditional use review. I'm not in favor of that. As for the cap, I, I like the 90 days. I think that's a good compromise for an unhosed SDR. I, the fees were something that, I know we hadn't really discussed it much, what we're going to charge for permit fees, and I don't know if you discussed it at the last meeting. But my thought was just to kind of float an idea out there of, you know, some houses rent for 500 a week, some rent for 5,000 a week. There are some that people are renting per night rather than per week. When we heard from Ms. King, she rents hers, you know, she has a room that she rents, she doesn't rent her whole house. And then I talked to Matt some time ago about this. I know we don't charge like an occupancy tax or anything like that, where some towns and cities do that. Have we thought about the possibility of a, like a 5% fee, like a use fee, or build in a, a sliding scale on permits to where if somebody's renting, maybe it's based on the value of the home. If they're renting the home for 5,000 a week, maybe they pay more on a permit than somebody who is renting for 500 a week. It's just a, just a thought. It might be a way to pay for, help pay for the third-party enforcement, too, and make it a little more equitable, rather than just having a, a flat fee for everyone. I don't know if that, that might be too difficult. Maureen, maybe you have some ideas on that.
Valerie, could I jump in on that real quick?
Sure, sure.
So I think, as I understand, the way that, you know, folks like Host Compliance and others like them work is, it's, it's a per-property, the, the, the cost that the town would incur is based on the number of properties that are, that are in the system. So regardless of it's a $1 a night stay or a $10,000 a night stay, it's the same amount of effort or involvement on the part of the vendor to do the work that they're doing. I also think that the variability probably, throughout the course of the year, on what a particular rental is going for, you know, it might go for a certain cost in peak July versus, you know, April or something like that. I don't know if there'd be consistency, you know, in, in terms of that pricing, that if, if you were envisioning some sort of tiered system, like I think I just heard you describe, that it's, it's conceivable that the same, the same property might go in and out of that tier. So I don't know, maybe you're talking about what their average rental is for the, for the whole year or not. But it also, I think, requires amount of, you know, self-reporting on the part of the, of the property owner. That would certainly add a, a much more complicated layer than probably just a straight, you know, a straight equitable fee. But that's, that's just how I understand how, how Host Compliance works, so.
Okay, well, that's good to know. My other thought was, we keep saying days, like 90 days, 30 days, and some people rent by the week and some, it's a home stay and it might be two days here, two days there. What if we used weeks instead of days? Instead of saying 90 days, we say 14 weeks or 13 weeks, since it's not necessarily a block of time? I don't know if that might make it more understandable for people, so they're not thinking, oh, well, I get 30 days. I can rent, you know, for three days here and then seven days here, and then, and it ends up being more than 13 weeks. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure I totally follow, yeah.
You don't? Okay. Well, some people don't, don't rent their place out for a whole block of time, for one whole week. And, and I'm sure what we're saying in the, in the ordinance is even if they rent it out for three days, it's considered a week.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep, yep.
Okay. So we're saying months instead of weeks. And we're not saying it has to be consecutive months, correct? Oh, we're just saying 90 days. So they know that it's a, okay. Well, I'm just thinking it might be easier to say weeks rather than days, since we're saying you, you rent for one week at a time.
So the, the, as, I think we understand that the, the guests might not rent for a week at a time, they might just rent for two, three nights, but that property is not eligible to be rented multiple times within one week's period. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that 90 days could spread out more throughout the year. The, 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 the nature of the 90 days, it's not, it's, it's actual rental booked, booked nights. It's not, it's, it's not like they only have three months to rent. Does that make sense? And, and frankly, it's part of the point why I didn't favor the, the limits to begin with. But, because I think, in my, in my opinion, the nature of it having to be somebody's primary residence, number one, limits you to roughly 182 days per year that you'd have available to you. And number two, on a practical level, most people for whom it's their primary residence are in it more days of the year than that. And so I think, I think there's a, a, a sort of almost natural selection limit that happens based on the nature of it being your primary residence versus having to add a complex layer of, you know, oh, well, this type of property is only 90 days, this type of property is 30. You know, we went through a lot of machinations about that. And, you know, one of the things that I've tried to focus on is how can we craft amendments and regulations that achieve the objective while also staying as simple as possible and not over-complicating things? So...
But my understanding, too, is there's no, there's no limit on hosted stays, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Right. So I think what Jamie's proposing is that the same is true with primary residence unhosed is to have it the same as hosted. So how do we want to get to conclusions on, on these things? Because I want to, do we want to take them one at a time? Because I'd like to also proceed to the seven-acre thing. And do we want to have everybody go off and think about durations of renting and implications of that? And we all come back together? Or do we want to resolve some of these this evening?
My opinion is that probably, I, I, I think it's unlikely anything's to be resolved tonight.
Right.
I, what I'm hope, what I was personally hopeful of is that everybody sort of digested the rationale, you know, sort of came to their own conclusion on whether or not they're generally supportive of the direction we've gone in as a committee. If there's anything that's sort of a showstopper, you know, I, I can't, I absolutely can't live with this. You know, those are the kinds of things that we'll wind up having to have votes on, just like we did in the committee. So, you know...
Okay, then, then maybe we could throw out some things such as how one, how the group feels around the short-term rental adjacent, because that gets into the, the lot that has multiple buildings. Only one can be rented as short-term rental or adjacent properties, things like that. And how, but, that people have a clear understanding of what that is about. People comfortable with that one?
Quick point?
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so in conjunction with that, just because we have had people question some of these proposals, if Maureen is up for it, if she's familiar with it, if she could describe her, her understanding of what are known as savings clauses and whether it would be feasible for us to put in a savings clause, saying if any of these particular proposals are challenged and thrown out, that short-term rentals become a prohibited use or otherwise, if the council would prefer, to make it a, just completely allowed use with no restrictions. If she could speak to that if she's up for it.
Go ahead, Maureen.
I'm not sure what you're asking. I know we could, this amendment would go into the zoning ordinance, and the whole zoning ordinance has a separability clause. So if we get challenged on any bit of it, we may lose that one bit, but everything else is still there. So even if someone were to challenge one part of it, I think the, the rest of it would survive. I know you did get, it's amazing how many people have interpretations about the US Constitution these days. I can tell you that we did get an opinion from John Wall about the primary residence versus a requirement that if someone was a Cape Elizabeth resident. And the, giving people preference because they're a Cape resident is a no-no. It's a, I think it's the Fourth Amendment. But he didn't say that we had a problem with allowing a requirement that people who have their primary residence would be able to operate short-term rentals in a more expansive way than people who, it is not their primary residence. When we have these types of amendments, typically, when you get close to the point where you're considering adoption, we have the attorney do a review anyway, be happy to do that again here. I don't want to be flip, but, you know, if someone really wants to rent a short-term rental in Cape Elizabeth, they can move here. And, and they can rent their, their home and become a permanent resident and fall under that category. So I don't know if I've answered your question, Counselor Straw. Please let me know if I haven't.
For the most part, yeah. As you know, with the separability, it's the everything else. It sounds like you're saying everything else survives. And I was saying, I guess my question is, let's say that what was challenged was something that basically, where we drew a distinction between primary residence and non-primary residence. And let's say that was somehow struck down. How would we want things to play out from there on out? And can we draft a, an additional section of the ordinance saying that if this is struck down, then here's how it plays out? And if I'm going too into the weeds, we can just ditch it. I just thought it was a good place to bring it up, now that we're discussing this adjacency situation as it starts to move a little more field from primary, pure primary residence.
With, with Counselor Garvin's permission? Okay.
Go ahead.
So the, the primary residence requirement, there are many, many, many places that are using that now, not just in Maine. I did a spreadsheet, I'd be happy to send it out to the council, and it was just a survey, not like a comprehensive one, but different states, places in the state of Maine, Boston has adopted that. So I don't think that we're really in jeopardy with making that requirement. But, you know, let's make sure whatever decision the council makes is as legally defensible as possible. I would ask our town attorney to craft for the council a set of whereas statements that really expresses the, the will of the council when you adopt something like that, so that if you are challenged in court, you would have the, the legal basis for defending yourselves. But that does not seem like an out-there kind of requirement. If there was something else that it felt like we were... If there was something else that it felt like we were really kind of leading the charge, then we should have a fallback position, but that doesn't feel like one of them.
Penny, did you want to push on some of those other questions? You're muted. Penny, you're on mute.
I was talking to myself. Um, it was a great conversation for the moment. Um, anyway. The seven acres piece or, um, greater than seven, um, and, um, one of the things that, um, came up was number of days around that as well and whether that should be, um, extended to, um, 180 or something along those lines. And I don't know if, um, and I know that it was John Green from, um, Sprague Court who, who brought this up, uh, relative to Ram Island. Because, um, his, his position is that this, um, purpose statement gets into, it's about residential neighborhoods and, um, um, Ram Island really doesn't fall within that, kind of realm of a traditional residential neighborhood. And, uh, and they do do short-term rentals in that, um, down on that complex. And so he was, he put forward whether, uh, we could look at the, um, number of days for short-term rental, um, relative to that, uh, land mass. And I know that others brought up, um, the greater than seven acres and the fact that they do unhoseded, um, short-term rentals. And so I think that's an area that we need to discuss as well. And I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a way to distinguish, is there? And, and doesn't even make sense because I agree with you, Jamie, that part of doing this was to try to simplify things. Is there a way to, um, uh, to look at? And that's when we came up with the seven acres was to look at larger land masses and, um, short-term rentals relative to that. And, um, do, do we, do we look at any of these larger land masses differently? And I'm not saying yes, we do, but I'm just saying that we need to entertain, um, the larger acreage in town.
Does anybody else want to comment on that? Go ahead, Valerie.
Because it's so big, the seven plus acres, I, I don't have a problem with it. And it's a use they've done for years, uh, unless this is something where they get a variance or something and call it a camp. I, I think that, um, I don't see a problem with 180 days there.
I mean, I certainly don't have a problem with 180 days. I have a problem with 180 days anywhere else, so. What's, what's everybody feel about next steps on, like I said, I, I didn't think we were going to sort of necessarily solve or resolve any of this stuff tonight. We're, we're approaching 10 o'clock. I think that's more than a reasonable amount of time to have spent discussing, um, discussing this this far. So what does everybody feel about kind of next steps you want to go in? Just have another workshop, um, you know, just to lay out the particulars on this. This is going to require, uh, at the point where we're all comfortable with the amendments, referral to the planning board. They're going to have to have, uh, the workshop on it, a public hearing, uh, come back to us. May or may not require going back to the ordinance committee, depending on what comes out of the planning board or what other direction the full council, um, you know, has for changes they may or may want, not want to see. And then ultimately I expect it'll have a full council public hearing, um, before voting on it. So, um, do folks want to have another workshop where we discuss this amongst us prior to referring it out to the planning board? Do we want to get that process going now? What, what are folks thinking? Penny?
Jamie, do we need to, um, actually vote on our recommended, our changes before it goes to the planning board? Meaning, um, and I don't know if you guys want to do this, but, um, to, if we have to vote on things before it goes to the planning board, that we all agree that they, 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 you know, the day limits, et cetera, that we all agree with these definitions? If we want to do that at a, a council meeting, I'm just feeling like another workshop is going to be, not very definitive, whereas if we make decisions at our council meeting, we're going to be definitive and move it on to the planning board. And then it's going to come back. And Matt's raising his hand.
Go ahead. I mean, I was going to say though, that, um, we, we would still be forwarding a draft to the planning board. We're not, we're not voting to approve anything, but.
I want to forward a draft that we all agree, to some extent, the content such as the days, et cetera. So don't.
Well, that's why I was kind of asking for the absolute showstoppers and not the, not the, well, I, you know.
The longer this moves forward with the numbers that exist in there, the more they become, uh, the, um, the, the answer. I think we need to say that here are the, um, the, the limits on days that we're putting in there or we have no limits on days. We've got to make, whatever goes to that planning board can't be, well, we sort of feel this way. I think it has to be, this is how we feel.
Well, I, I would say for the, for you and Chris and I, what's here represents that, right? I mean, the three of us.
Hey, hey.
So I, I want to hear, no, I, hold on, let me just, I want to hear from others who we're not really hearing from that much. It's the, you, me and Chris has been dominating the conversation. Because that's, that's what, that's what the three of us got to, to, to produce this, so.
But I'm going to just say that I agreed to move it forward because we said that we would address these numbers when it came here. That's where I came from. Okay.
We, we need, we need people to weigh in.
Okay.
Jeremy?
Um, I, I'm not uncomfortable with anything that's in here. I think the ordinance committee is going down the right road. And I am fully in favor of the ordinance committee, you know, taking this conversation, making some decisions after this and forwarding that to the planning board. I don't feel the need for another workshop to, to talk through this.
Can I make a point?
Go ahead, Chris.
I, I think Penny's point was this is not the decision of the planning board with respect to the day number. We're asking you to tell us your opinion. Don't say that you accept that. And I don't mean to criticize. I don't mean to come off as a jerk. It's one of my many character flaws. What we're saying is we want to hear from you. We put this in as just a placeholder. So if, if what you want is a placeholder, that's great, but just understand that this wasn't necessarily all of us agreeing on this number. It was the number to put in so we can get it here so you guys can weigh in with your independent opinions.
I, I just want to say, I mean, my view, placeholder sounds like it's something that none of us had any faith in. So, I, I, I mean, the, the, the point I made about us not all agreeing on it, but this is the compromise we came to. There's a difference between a placeholder that's just there. You might as well just have, you know, Greek text or X's or something in that case, if it was truly just a placeholder. But, you know, we had thoughtful discussion that said, well, okay, this is where we're, we're landing for now. None of us feel great about it for a variety of different reasons, but this is what we, this is where we landed. So I, 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 I understand the point that it's, might not be the final number, but it's more, I, I would say it's more than just an arbitrary number thrown in there is what I'm trying to say.
I don't disagree with that, but I don't want to send something to the planning board that, um, I'm going to just say, I don't want to send something to the planning board that, um, I don't necessarily, stand behind 100%, but I guess that's, comes up when we vote to send it to the planning board. I can vote accordingly.
Valerie?
Well, um, I think we could, we can go down the list of a few of these things and just see, like, I agree with the unhoseded seven plus acres, 180 days. I agree with unhoseded primary residence, 180 days. I agree with hosted primary, which is like a homestay, unlimited days. And I agree unhoseded non-primary residents, that's a day, adjacent residents, uh, 90 days. So that's kind of where I stand. I think that's similar to where, um, Jamie's coming from. I would have it a little bit looser. So that's my thoughts on the days. And, um, penalties, levels of enforcement, you know, we've got, um, emails from people wanting to know what are penalties for advertising or renting without permit. I think that's something that we may need to tighten up too. So I don't know, Jeremy, what, what are your thoughts about, um, the number of days and all? And Caitlin, maybe that's something that we can, um, kind of come to a consensus on.
Jeremy?
Sorry, I was actually pointing at Caitlin since she hasn't.
I didn't see her hand raised, but. Maureen, I do see your hand raised. Go ahead. Maureen, did you want to say something?
Yes, I do. If I can just get the button to work. And, and with respect to Counselor Penny Jordan, I'm, I'm trying to be respectful of the fact that it's 10 o'clock and, and you guys have been working hard on this for many, many months. I, if you're comfortable, I think you have enough here to send to the planning board. And I think the value of the council being willing to take the time to have this workshop tonight is to look at, this is a, this is a new structure. It's really focusing on primary residency as a major organizing element. And if these are the, if you're generally okay with that, it may be enough to send to the planning board because things like changing the number of days, that's an easy thing to change in terms of, of changing the text in the, in the ordinance. And I, I do, I say that knowing that Council Penny Jordan does not like to leave these numbers the way they are. But, um, I also am hearing people saying that they want to get this ordinance done this season so that people can plan for next year. And I just thought I'd offer that.
Penny?
I, where I come down is that as something traverses through a bureaucracy, the point at which you pass things along saying that it will be addressed at the next stage in many instances stays there as a result of, um, having not addressed it before, when you, um, have the opportunity, because the outcome will be that the, and you can say, Maureen, pass it along, you have enough, but that's passing something through a bureaucracy that then becomes the answer. And I have seen it happen a thousand times, um, as you pass systems requirements through, as you're designing major systems. And if I have an opportunity to change these numbers before they go to the ordinance committee, I will propose that I want to change those numbers.
So Penny, my point, I, I don't, I, I understand what you're saying. What I was trying to say before in expressing that the numbers that are in here are what resulted from the three of us over many months' time, sort of having these same conversations, is that, you know, I'm happy to try and continue to convince people to come over to my line of thinking on things. Uh, uh, unless three more of you do, I'm also content to let these numbers go as they are because I think they're a reasonable place to have landed. I, I don't fully agree with them, uh, in, in some cases or, you know, various aspects. But, but so unless there's, unless there's movement amongst folks that says, okay, you know, we think that this should change to that, then I'm, I'm not sure where it gets us anymore.
But neither do, I, I guess where I come from is that as we, having lived through this process, many, and many are, or, uh, there were points at which we, we put numbers out there to say, we're going to come back. And we did come back and we did discuss some. But we also had some where we said, um, this one takes a little bit more discussion. Um, and then we agreed that we'd send this along to the council. Jamie, if, if, I don't have a problem with the, um, the, um, the primary residence unhoseded being similar to the hosted. I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with that we have, um, some, uh, numbers in there that should, that I feel need to be 180 days versus 90 or whatever. And so that's what I'm proposing. And I think Valerie Deveraux agrees with.
It sounds like we need one more person.
Okay, Caitlin.
Go ahead, Caitlin. Your arm disappears in the outer space there, so it's really hard to see if you're raising your hand or not, but.
I, yeah, so I'll finally chime in. I've been listening to everyone. At one point we talked about hashing this out at our next actual meeting that's going to send it to the planning board, which I'm in agreement that I think some of the numbers need to change. But at the same time, it's 10 o'clock at night and I think we need to go into our meeting, know, having a list of what it is that's going to be looked at. And if we could have that list, like, you know, a week in advance would be great. So that everyone's coming with, you're going to have your decision made and what your opinion is of this number, this number, this number. We're going to set the numbers and send it to the planning board at our next meeting would be the approach that I think would be the smartest. Then everybody can take the next, I don't even know, when we're having that meeting. Matt just told me about.
Monday. Monday.
Monday, next Monday. So if we could know that we're coming to that meeting, that we need to know these numbers and make that decision and set it and see what the planning board says and goes from there.
Go ahead, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, uh, thank, thank you. You know, listening to the conversation, it, not to belabor the point, but it really sounds like you need another workshop.
No.
Because.
No, at the meeting.
No, we're doing it at the meeting.
My experience.
Do it at a meeting where a vote can be taken and done.
But, but the concern is that it's very difficult for council to make substantial edits to any ordinance at the council level, uh, when you're trying to move it forward from that point into the next, next round. So if you get to someplace, you have a chance of, as, as Counselor Penny Jordan had said, looking at this systemic problem that might go forward and you might find, uh, you know, you're marrying in haste, but you're going to have to try to. you know, you're marrying in haste, but you're going to have to try to repent at your leisure. So the concern would be if you, if you're, if your product wasn't ready to go forward and you come, you try to make a decision because you just, you just want to move it to the next step, you may find that you, you, you come forward with a document that you may not, you may, you may come back to the square again is what I'm concerned that you might run into. And I'd hate to see you do that. So uh, it is June and the goal is to have it for the next season. So you're really quite a ways out. But I think you may be better to have it as the sole, sole focus of one, one workshop with having the, the language of the entire ordinance laid out and you can go right through each section to, to make sure everybody's in accordance with the changes or the direction that you're going in.
I would say that if, if that is the direction that the group decides to go, that it's really incumbent upon everybody to do a significant amount of homework to come to that meeting. You know, ready to ready to really roll up sleeves and, and edit on the things that you feel like you're not comfortable with. And people also need to be able to um, express either agreement or disagreement and be able to, to move on from it. So um, I think we've very clearly articulated and laid out the principles of the amendments involved here. But um, without people being ready to commit to taking action, we, we can't go any further. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, the one thing I was seeing, your next two dance cards are pretty full. You have a fully carrying on the school board budget next week as well as the, the formal action on the, on the 15th. Looking at July as another option. The sixth lines up really nice if you wanted to have a workshop. And then you could have an item for, an action item for the 13th at the council meeting on that, on that evening. But it would be adding, you generally haven't had a workshop in the month of, of July. But uh, that, that at this point would, could line up pretty well with your, with your calendar if you so chose.
And nobody's going on vacation anywhere anyway, so.
Long as the internet's up.
I think, I think our challenge is.
I, I don't, sorry, I, sorry Penny, go ahead.
I think our challenge.
There's a delay there.
I think our challenge is, I think our challenge is, is that when we laid out our next steps, moving to workshop, which we're here now, then to the council, that uh, back to the council and then to the planning board can take up to 90 days before you even come out of planning board, get back to the council, set a public hearing and then vote. So we're out into November, probably. If we say July, August, September, October, November.
Now you got Newtown councilors.
Exactly, yippee. Yep.
Go ahead, Matt.
If I may, looking at, looking at the calendar, if you, if you had it for action on the 13th of July, the planning board has a meeting on the 21st, uh, which is a week later plus, plus a day that they could, if you were fairly confident you were going to refer to the, to, for the, to the planning board for review, they could have it on that agenda for that evening. And then come back with a recommendation for council to have it in August. And then you could set a public hearing in September and then final adoption in October. Of course, that is the cockeyed optimist talking at 10 past 10 on a, on a Monday night, but that is how the calendar breaks down.
What I was going to say though, is I, I don't really think that there's any time dropped between now and, and the two July meetings that you just talked about because we're, we're not going to have another workshop between now and you know, any other time here in June. So even, I, I don't, I, I didn't have an expectation of coming out of tonight with this being ready to move in a vote on the eighth. Penny, I don't know if you did, but.
I'm an eternal optimist, so.
I, I figured that this would take at least one more discussion.
And it's going to take at least two discussions or three at the planning board. That's okay, let's go. I still, I still haven't had my Tito's yet tonight, so. Almost 10:15.
So we'll plan for a July workshop? Is that what everybody wants to do or? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
7 o'clock, July 6th.
What day of the week is that?
Monday the 6th.
It's Monday.
I can't swear I'll make it, but sure, why not? Right after 4th of July weekend?
Yeah.
It should be recovered by then, Counselor Straw.
Too many hamburgers.
Like I said, nobody's going anywhere. It's the only thing to look forward to.
Council meetings, yes. Okay, so everybody is going to come to that workshop with um, input, correct? We all have homework.
Okay.
Thank you, Jamie.
The other, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to add any comment? Okay. The only other, having just agreed on that, the only other thing though, that I was just thinking of, Matt, was, and I don't know what else is scheduled for, we, we do have an existing ordinance committee meeting scheduled on the 18th of June. That we could use. We could use, again, it doesn't, it doesn't advance us any further. It, you know, we'd still be hitting the July agenda, but if we, and I, I don't know if it accomplishes anything is the point, but it's a, it's a, a meeting we already have on the books. And I, I don't know what else is planned for that meeting, if anything.
Have a, we have a guest speaker.
Oh, right, yeah.
From the Cumberland County Conservation.
Right.
District, right, yeah.
So we could, we could knock that out of the way first and then, then go to this.
Yeah.
Theoretically.
Theoretically, yep.
What are, what are, what's everybody's thoughts about that? Yes?
Are you asking Penny and Chris or?
No, everybody would come to the meeting is what I'm saying. Everybody would come to the ordinance meeting instead of having a workshop on the 6th.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to? I have a Fort Williams Park Committee meeting that evening um, at 6 o'clock, but I, yeah, don't let.
So the ordinance committee is not scheduled to start till 7:00 and if we have this other agenda item ahead of it, I'd be surprised if you, as long as you didn't mind playing a double header, I'd be surprised if you couldn't make it, so. Yep, Matt?
Would you like us to notice that as a, as a town council workshop, we could have the ordinance committee and then to be followed by a town council workshop?
That's what I, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting.
Probably noticed.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was suggesting.
Okay.
I think that's a great suggestion because it's fresh in everybody's mind rather than waiting till after July 4th.
Okay. So let's take that plan then. All right. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
You don't need one, Mr. Chairman, you're okay because it's a workshop.
All right. Last call for anybody? Nope? All right. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.